And that, you know, you, that, that is not necessarily a direct reflection of the four day week like I thought it might be. The, the, the number one thing we hear as people move, go out is that they work in Fayetteville, they work in Springdale, they're going that away and they want to take their kids that away and then pick them up at the end of the day when they come back. And we also have a large homeschool community here and we lose a substantial number of students to that. Anything we could do to attract those people to come back, whether it's for one period or for multiple periods or whatever, we would certainly love to work with them and encourage them to come back. And we can certainly offer, especially in secondary schools, some upper level classes that might be hard for them to do at home. And we would, we would love to bring those people back. There's a breakdown, breakdown by the buildings on our enrollment. English language learners, we have 148 active students served. I will tell you that I, I pulled those numbers in comparison to where we were last year and they're very consistent. And in every building, you might find a, a change of three or four, I think four or five was the highest savings on one building. But we have 148 active students, 64 monitored students. In the primary, we have 53 active, five monitored, intermediate 34 and 31, 36 and 20 in the middle school, 25 and eight in, at the high school. And in St. Paul schools, we have zero active and zero monitored.
What's the difference between active and monitored?
An, an active student is receiving, is receiving daily services and a monitored student is receiving assistance.
So they're proficient, so it's, they're on a higher level.
Yeah, they're on a higher level, or a greater level of need would be.
Okay, so they're like, and they're like four levels if they're on past the one at least.
And, and the active students, the active students require a much greater, what would you want to add to that? Y'all can probably answer that better than I can.
Yeah, your, your monitoring students get indirect services support in the classroom and we watch them usually for typically for two years.
Okay, now I want to explain this a little bit, all right? We, we have received our test scores based on last year, all right? And that is, that is the first column. But the first column was the, the first column in Watson Elementary is really the one I want to talk about the most. They were not really tested, so their score is the intermediate score. So when you look at that Watson Elementary in that first column that says D, that's a little unfair to them. That is, that, that is, that is strictly a reflection of the intermediate school. The state realized there were problems in the new test scores, so we shift to the column in the, on the right. And the column on the right is actually the correct test scores. These are the 2023's test scores that were also hold harmless for 2024, which means if you improved your score on the last test, you can count it. But if you did not, you get to count the 2023. Current test scores are going to be based off of growth. That's going to be one of the major components to it. So, so they had to have some baseline to start with for every school. And in the, in the primaries case, there was no baseline, so they assigned the intermediate school, which is next closest school to their number. Would you like to address that or clear that up? You might clear that up better than I did.
No, so in the past, the, the difference between the primary score and, and the intermediate score has been, because we've never used the primaries achievement, there's never been a consistent test across the state. So the only factor that, that impacted our grade, our letter grade was attendance. In the new formula, they took that out, so that's why all the numbers are identical. They will re, release new grades based on this test that we just completed. So that should change and be a real reflection of Watson Primary in the coming months.
Okay, so, so what we will reflect and what the state of Arkansas will reflect as our test scores for this year will be the column on the right. That will be current test scores or, which current test scores were last year's test, actually, or the test before based on hold harmless. And we will reflect the better of the two. That will establish the point then that growth now will be determined. And then, then that will reflect academically where each building is. Growth is going to be vital to your test scores. It's not just necessarily did Tommy score a certain level. It is equally as important that Tommy grew 20 points, no matter what his final score is. Matt, you want to add to that?
Um, I mean, I, I want to celebrate St. Paul for sure. Uh, their elementary was a D last year, but they're, they actually on the new scores moved up to a C. Um, so they're moving in the right direction. Intermediate's moving in the right direction too, but they're just short of, uh, moving up to a C.
It was like six points went to K.
I think in October we'll be, we'll be celebrating that we don't have any Ds.
So we just completed our testing for this year. We will not have those results back until August, you know, maybe September. We hope we have them back by the time school starts. Sometimes they say that and they make it, sometimes they don't. We, I, you know, I will tell you this, you got a staff that works very hard. They work very hard and, and, and they are committed to students. And, and I, I do think there are some things, you know, aligning our curriculum from building to building. So we make sure that we have growth in the primary and then that growth then transfers to the intermediate and then transfers to the middle and then it transfers to the high school. I think there, there could still be some work there as there can be an E district, you know, and nobody's perfect. Everybody's trying to improve. But the one thing about this test is it does measure your growth. And, and so what we can do to grow is going to be very important to us, moving from those baselines right there.
Okay, Matt.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you say that St. Paul went up to a C?
Yeah, it's a little confusing on there because it's backwards. They were in 2023, they were a D.
And so those are wrong.
But on the simulated score, they got a C. So for this hold harmless year, we can accept that C. Um, if we improved, we can accept that new letter grade. And so that's why it shows as a C in the right hand column. Cause they were, they were a D last year, but they moved to a C on the new accountability system.
Oh, okay.
So congratulations, St. Paul.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
We, we did do a survey this spring, talking about the four day week. We did do a survey this spring of parents, students and staff. Those results are listed there, students, we received 531 responses. Eighty-four point six percent were in favor of the four day week. Parents, I mean, I would, I would assume students would be in favor of it, you know? Parents, 575 responses, 71%. That's a greater percentage after we've had a year in the system than I believe I saw on the initial polls that you all sent out to start with. So I think you could logically say our parents, now that they've had a year of it, are satisfied with, with the progress of the four day week. And then faculty and staff, you know, they're kind of like students. You can kind of see why they would have a vested interest in it and they had almost 86% in favor of it. We did get a lot of really good comments from, from, um, uh, each of them. And, and really, I, I was a little shocked that those numbers in general were even as high as they were, to be honest with you. I think that speaks highly of the things that have taken place in the buildings this year with the four day week and, 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 um, so we're going to talk about this in just a minute. But as, as a district wanting to stay in the four day week, one of the requirements are you have to show improvement on state norm reference test. So we have met all of the obligations for that to move forward for next year under Arkansas Code 610. The fourth bullet, the first bullet is you've got to be in there so many hours of seat time. And then, and then you've got to make sure your parents are on board and your community's on board. But the, the fourth bullet, this is the one that I think we've really got to keep working on. Districts that operate four day school weeks who do not demonstrate yearly improvement on the state approved norm reference test and other assessment instruments required by or approved by ADE will forfeit their right to this option. So we have local control, you are the local school board, you get to make the decision on what you think is best. The only thing that would catch us there would be the fourth bullet. So if we want to be a four day week, we've got to convince our teachers that, that we have to show academic improvement every year. We can't have D schools because it would be easy for the state to say, we're going to let the four day week stay except for, you know, as long as you're not a D school or an F school. We've got to have buy-in by our kids. These tests are important, what they're doing academically is important if they want to stay on the four day week. And also for the parents. We are in compliance with, with Arkansas Code 610-117. I want to thank the principals and, and, uh, some of the staff here for helping us work on that last week. We sent a report in. We have received the letters back saying we're in compliance. So we feel very good with that, State Board meets on the eighth, which I believe is Thursday. So I guess things could change, you know, when the State Board meets, but I wouldn't expect them to and I would expect us to move forward. But it is that fourth bullet that we will need to continue to monitor and, and watch as we move forward. School safety, uh, we, you know, I, I just, I, I don't think there's anything really more important. I mean, I, it's hard to say that because it's important kids read, it's important kids can do math, it's important, everything is important. But they have to feel safe when they come here. And, and so, you know, we, that's just an example of some of the things. And to, to be honest with you, Bailey and I sat down and talked about this and we could have done an entire report just on school safety. We, we doing, you do an excellent job with school safety. You are out in front of others and, and, and I, I don't just say that, but, cause I have been around many other schools. So we, we do an excellent job of school safety. That doesn't mean there's still not areas to improve and not things we can do differently. But without a doubt, we put a tremendous amount of money into that. We put a tremendous amount of resources. That kind of falls under, under Bailey and, and Matt and, and they do, they do a wonderful job. But, uh, uh, we are, we are really doing, we're, we're really doing a lot. And, and, um, Bailey, why don't, you know, anything you want to add to that? I know you, you, you gave me more items, Bailey, than I could put on the PowerPoint.
No, I mean, I would just, I would just say, you know, we, we have, I mean, you've heard me talk in the last couple of board meetings, all the safety improvements we got going on, you know, the, the COPS grant, that 300,000 cameras, that's just part of that $492,000 in the COPS grant that we received, uh, to do, you know, a bunch of other stuff. And so these were just kind of the bigger highlights on, on different safety things that we've done over the years that, or this last year, sorry. Still got more down the works and we're going to continue to keep, keep trying to build. But I'm very proud, I mean, I do agree, I feel like we are very progressive and in a very good standing as far as our safety and the different systems and solutions we have in place for our schools.
And do you do safety checks?
Uh, we do safety checks once a month. We have a, a Google form that we walk through and me and the SROs will, you know, whoever's near that campus for that month. And, you know, we, we do a safety check at every campus and it goes through and it checks, you know, our staff wearing their badges, our doors propped open, our interior doors locked. If, um, you know, it's at the secondary level, our students wearing their badges or their drills up to date. So we go through and do that once a month. And, um, so as soon as that form is filled out, it goes to me and Mr. Law, Mr. Ferguson, and it goes to the principal at that campus. And, and so we, we try to stay vigilant about it.
In summary, all of our schools are accredited. Facility improvements, Blaine is going to talk about that. We're going to, we're going to kind of have a special section with that tonight about some of the things that are taking place. I think they're, they're, uh, I'm, I'm proud of some of the things we're going to try to do this summer to, to, uh, work on some facilities and, and, um, try to make some improvements. Facility master plan continues, you know, we, we, uh, have, have on the plan and we've talked about this before. The intentions of possibly doing a new high school at some point, moving the middle school to the high school. Uh, and then, and then, uh, doing some demo up on top of the hill and have that for a future project. We have some discussions about our elementary schools, especially, especially the primary building and some, uh, things that, uh, we would like to do there. Our facility master plan comes out every two years and, and we will do a revision to it this summer, working with Mr. Chalk, welcome, Mr. Chalk, good to have you with us tonight. And, and, uh, uh, working with him and, and working with you all is, is what your vision for facilities are. You talk about important things that the school board does, that's one of them. Because that has to be planned out years in advance. So, um, you know, I, 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 I look forward to seeing how that goes and, and what that holds for us. Baseball and softball, we're going to talk about a little bit more tonight. It's moving forward as we would, would hope it would. And, uh, I am excited about your, your vision meeting tonight. I think for, for your school, for your people out here, understanding kind of what the vision of the board is, is one of the most important things you've all did. And so I do, I do look forward to the work you're going to put into that and, and the thoughts you're going to give. That is kind of the roadmap that then, that then the school follows as we move forward. So anything we need to add to that?
No.
If there's anything else, okay? Anything you all have to add to that? All right, I think we've got it. Fair enough, we can move into the regular meeting.
We've got a band concert tonight, so damn it, then we're going to slip out of the band concert.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, uh, we come to you tonight, God, and we just, uh, thank you for the day that you've given us, God. We just pray that you would be with us tonight as we meet and discuss business for the school district. And I pray that you would give us wisdom to make, uh, decisions that would be what is best for the, the kids of the district and, and the district as a whole. Um, and, and God, I just pray that whatever decisions we make would honor you. And, uh, God, I pray that, uh, you would just be with, uh, all the teachers and administration as the, the year begins to wrap up. God, I pray that, that, uh, they would finish strong and, and God, that, that summer would be restful and, and that, uh, as we begin to plan for, uh, next fall, that, uh, God, you would, you would just prepare everybody and, uh, that it would be the greatest year Huntsville's ever had. And, uh, God, we just pray that you would, once again, bless this meeting tonight. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
We're going to call this May 6, 2025, School Board Meeting to Order. Uh, we do have a forum.
Thank you. I, uh, consent agenda, we have, uh, the agenda for tonight, the minutes from, from our last meeting and from a disciplinary meeting. Enrollment report, we've kind of already, we've kind of already gone over the enrollment report as well as the financial report. Does anybody have any questions about any of those items that are in the consent agenda? If not, I would recommend then that we move, approve the consent agenda.
Can I get a motion difference, person by Nick, by Connie, second by Bobby, all in favor?
Thank you. All right, tonight, we, we did the, we did the superintendent's report to the public. We kind of breezed over the maintenance component of it. I, I've asked Blaine to come in. We've had some questions about, about, uh, the, some of the projects for this summer, getting our campuses ready for next year. We've had some questions about the solar array and some of the things we have seen with integrity and some of the things we are expecting to see, uh, this summer. So Blaine, I will just turn it over to you.
Well, I'll start off with, uh, I really hate following Mr. Law because he did a probably a much better presentation than what I'm going to do. Mr. Law did ask me to kind of talk over some of our summer projects and, uh, some of the integrity, you know, we've been, this has been going on since I've been here. This is, I have learned a lot in the past few weeks with it and I was going to share some of that information along. So we're just going to kind of hit some hot points. We, I do want to say is we have a lot of moving pieces going on this summer. With Bailey, with working with Bailey, with the safety and security grant, with the fencing and, and that kind of stuff, uh, with integrity, there's a whole lot we're not going to be able to get in to do that we would, I would like to get more, you know, to get more on the schedule. One of my goals, uh, one of my original goals is, is to start, um, start trying to get a rotation with painting and floors. Unfortunately, this summer with the integrity program coming in, our floors is going to be something that's going to be harder for us to, to hit my goal because integrity will be working. I'll touch base on that in a little bit, just a little bit. On this slide here, it kind of shows what our, what our priorities are, our floor waxing every year, playground mulch, gas line replacement at, at St. Paul, uh, some painting. Talked about the safety and security grants, uh, upgrades, some pressure washing and the integrity group. So our summer floors, this summer, we've got 4M, that is our contract custodial company has come in. They're going to be handling all of our floors at the primary or at the middle school and high school this year. Real curious to see how that goes. They're, um, they're, I hate to say it, not to, not to degrade any of our people, but they, that's what they do. So I've been learning from them and hopefully we can kind of pass that along to, to our staff as well. At, um, primary, we're getting 100 and something windows put in the primary campus this summer. So, yeah, awesome. So I'll, I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that, but we're going to have to try to schedule all of our flooring and all of our projects around them working. And so St. Paul and intermediate, primary, we all handle, I mean, we handle that all in-house. This year, in the past, we've spent, oh, I'm going off the top of my head here, $22,000, I believe, to have Surf Pro come in and shampoo all of our carpet. This year, we actually bought us an extractor so that we can, we can maintain our own carpet and not just be ones a year. If our poor custodians last year, you can ask Jennifer, they go and roll up every primary rug that's in that primary campus, roll it up, take it down to the cafeteria, unroll it, and by the time it's all said and done, about half that primary hallway is carpet, all of the cafeterias carpet and all of the, you know, all of the stage is carpet. This is, I mean, this is going to say a deal a lot of work because now we're not going to be rolling it up, unrolling it and, you know, then having to roll it back up to transport it back to the room. Onto our playground mulch. One of the things, and I think Jennifer, and I don't know so much about Kayla or St. Paul, we've had, what, three kids in the last month ball in the playground and break an arm or something. Our mulch over the years, we just keep adding to it. And it's compacted down now so much that there's not really any fall barrier in it. So one of the things we're looking at doing is digging all that mulch out, or at least the majority of it, and then coming back with a good thick layer of fresh clean mulch to give the kids some play, some fall, fall protection in case they do fall. We'll buy through either Eastland Wood Products or Woodmore's out of Sonora, but, I mean, we'll buy it bulked and we'll have probably three or four semi-loads of mulch come in this summer to do that. So, yes, ma'am.
Have we looked at getting the, not rubber mulch, but the rubber that you put, that's like the?
I have looked at the price on that.
I know it's.
And whenever I, whenever I said something to Mr. Law about it, I think he was like, and what's the price on that?
I mean, I know it's.
So it is, it is very expensive. And I would love to be able to say that we can afford to do that, but that would probably take my whole year's budget just to build playgrounds. Whenever you figure St. Paul, intermediate, primary, um, that's, that's a lot, that, that's a lot.
Uh, Blaine, like on the install of the new mulch, that's just like physical labor, you know? And so it, do you think like these kids, the high school kids, all need service hours? Could you get some of those kids to come in and just shovel mulch and rake mulch and?
One of the things I plan on doing is talking to Mr. Nichols and, and Ms. Watkins to see if they have any kids that are needing volunteer hours. I know last year, this, this year, they would be sophomores is, I guess, is the oldest group. The issue that we have is we kind of have to watch their age, I mean, making sure they're 16. But yes, that is something that we can, that we would definitely take the help in and, and all.
They're going to be 16 to run a shovel? Well, I'm sorry, I thought that you just got me off guard.
To, to work around the power equipment and such, because we'll be running, um, we'll be running mini ax, we'll be running, um, um, our skid steer and our tractor with it. So, yeah, for the safety, I think they pretty much need to be 16.
Okay.
Um, the St. Paul gas line upgrade, one of the biggest issues, whoops. One of the biggest issues that we had with St. Paul was, programs grow. I know that they use their, um, their drama club or whatever uses that gym for their presentations and such. And, and they're very limited on the timeline that they have that they can use. It's either too hot or too cold. One of the issues that we've got right now is the gas line that we have going into it does not meet the standards that we need. We can't add any more heat, we can't add any more BTUs to, to the gas line that we have. So I've been working with the plumber, I've worked with Arkansas, or I'm sorry, Black Hills Energy. And we have kind of engineered a plan of how we're going to get, how we're going to run a new gas line in from our maintenance shop into the gymnasium and repop the gymnasium. This is, this is, this will allow us to put a second heater in there to hopefully help make it so that we can, we can have events in there. With Bruce's schedule coming up next year, they're going to have the boys and girls practicing at the same time. And, well, I mean, they're going to be able to rotate back and forth into the old gym and new gym for practice. So it is something that, that we feel that is needed. Painting, this is one that I would love to get, get onto a rotation. We're, we have a lot of moving pieces from, um, this summer with, and I want to steal some of Bailey's thunder, and I don't mean to, but with, um, with all the safety and security upgrades, with the windows and integrity and everything, it's just going to be hard to get in there and to come up with, with a solid 20% of what we're going to do. Whenever the first day of school is out, we're going to start working on the intermediate building. We're going to, we're going to paint, and Kayla will give me her colors. We'll paint, we'll get her hallways painted and her doors painted at the very minimum on her campus. At the high school.
How long has it been since that building's been painted? Okay, go ahead.
So it's been, it's been a while. The high school is where we're moving to next with, we're going to take care of their doors. And anybody that's been in that high school, those doors are going to take some prep work. And we're going to have to do some sand and it's going to be a little bit more labor intensive. So my goal at, uh, my goal at the high school is we're going to hit the doors, we're going to hit the trim and then kind of if, see how our time goes and how our personnel is to see if we can move and do, go down the hallways on that as well. That's a lot of square footage and especially whenever you figure, I mean, it's not square footage. I mean, it's, it's the height, I mean, so there's a lot of square footage. So that is our goal. I know that, that Bruce has a plan and our custodians down at St. Paul do a fantastic job of trying to facilitate everything that. everything that Bruce kind of gets planned on the painting down there. I know that there's some classrooms that they're going to work on and I'm not, I can't give you an answer which classroom it's going to be. Let's see, pressure washing.
What was that primary special entrance?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, I want to let, I want to let Jennifer, she, she hit me up about this and she said, we'll volunteer our time and I said, I've got money in the PO for, for painting.
That's not how that started out.
But if you wanted to thank us.
So we have a very gray building and it just doesn't scream an elementary school. And if you've been into our building lately, you know, our teachers have gotten in this habit of making balloon arches just to add some color down the hallway and I was actually up at middle school a while back and I was in the sixth grade building and you know, they had the colors and I was like, that's what we need to do. So each of our classrooms, the doors are kind of in a little alcove and so they're going to paint different colors down the hallway and not that this really goes with what he was saying, but you know, we have the windows above the, in the classrooms that kind of go down the hall hoping to get hold of Candace Samuels, if she's listening, she doesn't know this yet, but to do some little window film up there and just make it look inviting and like an elementary school. So that's our special project, they have parameters that were muted rainbows kind of, but it'll be nice to say, hey, her classroom is in the blue right down there, so.
Yeah, we'll help them remember too.
Yes, yes, so we're excited about it even if we have to do a little community service ourselves.
So, yeah, I appreciate Jennifer stepping up and doing that because trying to get anything done within the primary campus on the inside is going to be really difficult because they're going to have to be working around the integrity group and everything as, as they're finishing up their work. The pressure washing, what I have done is I've reached out to a local pressure washer company and I've got him scheduled for a whole week. We had him come in and pressure wash the front of the high school last year, made a tremendous difference. I had two custodians spending about two weeks out there straight and they did maybe a sixteenth of what he did in an eight-hour period. So some of the things that I've kind of hit up the principals about with all the new fencing and everything going in, the new mulch is maybe we look at, you know, cleaning our, pressure washing our, our playground equipment, trying to clean up around our, our entrances. I'm kind of leaving that up to the, I'm kind of leaving that up to each building principal so that they can, you know, deem what they feel is most, most important and they have them for a day. So that's kind of the plan and if we need more, once we get into, once we get into July, then we'll, we'll look and see about adding more to them. Let's see. Now into the integrity, who is integrity and what have they done for us? Integrity was a program that they started prior to me getting here and like I said earlier, that we've learned a lot the past few weeks about what they are and what they do. One of the things they, some of the things they've done is the water conservation. What they did is put all new flush valves on our toilets. Not all, but the majority of our toilets, they put in low-flow hand wash sink aerators on the hand wash sinks. They changed out some of our water heaters to help give us some gas conservation. We went from tank-style water heaters in some places to tankless so that we're not having to heat, heat water that's standing there all summer long and such. They're working on their solar array right now. May ninth, they're doing the acceptance test on it and then we're still up in the air about when Carroll Electric is going to finalize it and accept it and start buying our electric from us. We should know more in the coming weeks on that and we'll keep you updated on that. The solar array is built in Rapid, Arkansas right now, that's where Carroll Electric has, has had a place to do it, I guess, and, and with integrity. And they're estimating that they're going to produce about eighty-five percent of the electricity that we, that we use. So we're not getting paid for it, we're, we're just going to see discounts and savings on our, I mean, on our utilities. And the last thing that integrity is doing for us is the, the window replacement. And if you look here, this is our, this is the map of the Huntsville Middle School. All the buildings that are marked in green are the ones that are getting, getting new windows. That's a hundred, for the Huntsville Middle School, it's a hundred and twelve openings. They're slated to start at the middle school on June second and wrap it up on August first. And that is really pushing it towards the end of, you know, right up to the start of when school starts. There is some asbestos abatement that's going to have to go on, they're planning on starting that on the June ninth and should be done in a week to two weeks on the, the abatement of the asbestos. So the, the numbers inside the buildings, that is their, their work order. They're going to start on building one, which is, I guess, the old agri building. Go to building two, three, four is the library and five is the science building. So that's kind of our flow on that. Okay, any questions on that? Now we'll move to primary. As you can see at primary, every building with the exception of the bathroom and the storm shelter gets, gets new windows and that's all the way around on it. Ms. Wilson, they come in, they, they mocked one in in Ms. Wilson's room, so if you have, I shouldn't have taken a picture of that and posted on there. But they're nice black windows, I mean, they're, they did a good job, I mean, I I think it really helped the looks of the building quite a bit. Once we get them all, all in, I think, I think it'll be a pretty good, pretty good upgrade on our buildings. And the same thing there, we're starting on June the second, the June the second in the pre-K building and then we're just going to keep moving around, around the campus and finishing up in the kindergarten. There's ninety-five windows within the Watson primary. St. Paul Middle School has fifteen openings in it. Their, this building as well has a little bit of asbestos in it that they've got to do some abatement on and they're going to be starting on June ninth and their, their finishing date is on June twenty-seventh. On a different note, there is some more, there's some doors that are, that will be going in as well that will be part of Bailey's safety and security grant. Now for some good news, this is my final slide, so I'll keep this, keep this short. Whenever I was talking with, with integrity last week or this week, they gave us this comparison. So their baseline, this is just a baseline. If you look, the baseline use kilowatt-hours, metric mega BTUs and kilogallons, that is from our twenty-twenty-two bills. The current use is from our twenty-twenty-four. So pretty much across the board, we have dropped about fifteen percent in our, in our consumption. With that said, we had a savings of about ten to twelve percent, which equaled out to be forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. That was the savings that we have had on our utilities since twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four. Now, there's some other things that go into that as well. We had Bohannon's Heating Air finished up and twenty-twenty-two hadn't finished up their COVID money HVAC installations, so that's, that kind of weighs into it. There was something else, oh, the four-day, the four-day school week, the four-day school week. I feel like isn't as big as a help as what one might think because of the extra hours and we're still heating and cooling, you know, on that Monday that we're off. But as far as like kitchen, kitchen use and, and stuff like that, I think, I think the four-day week has, has helped us out with that some.
So theoretically, our electric bill after the array finally gets going should be under a hundred thousand dollars theoretically.
After they, well, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean eighty-five percent of two-hundred-and-thirteen would put it well below a hundred thousand.
Is that a month or is that?
No, that is a year, that's a year, that's a year. Now that does increase our solar locker activities. The one thing I will say is you look at the Huntsville water, I don't mean to call.
Let's, let's process those though, right?
That is because of the sewer rate, sewer rate increase. We actually saved like seventeen percent on our usage and we went up forty-two percent on our cost. So, and there's a chart that I'm sure we'll share with you later, if integrity comes in, there's a chart that kind of shows how everything's laid out, I showed it to Mr. Law this morning and it was like, we're not really certain where we are on this because of the extended time that it's taken to get to this point. So, and that's something that we'll share and keep y'all up to, up to date with in the future.
Well, the windows, just at primary, should make a huge difference. Yeah, it's not going to make that, it'll make some difference at the middle school, but with every door opening to the outside yeah, well, on the buildings that you're replacing right now.
Well, and Bailey's putting the film on and then the safety and security grants as well, you know, that's going to have some UV resistance in it as well, so that's going to be some help. There's, there's lots of things. Matter of fact, integrity didn't figure any savings by having the windows in. You know, we were able, they were, they were able to use the money that we're saving on our utilities, utility bills to do some of these upgrades and that's, that's how they had this plan. So, and whatever, in that chart, they have it with, with all of the expected hike increases and all that stuff and they have, I mean, their bottom line is in twenty-five years, they expect that we would save, you know, roughly three-point-five billion dollars in a twenty-five-year period.
So I'm guessing most of the, the Black Hills Energy, you know, for the, the natural gas, is that due to the new air conditioning units mostly or?
I think it's a combination, I mean, we did go to, we did go to higher efficiency, more energy efficient units and with, with going to the four-day week and then also you kind of got to look at the weather. I mean, I, I can't, I can't remember what the weather was like yesterday, much less in twenty-twenty-two compared to twenty-twenty-four. So, I mean, that's one of the things that we should have looked at too, is to see what our, what our temperatures, our average temperatures were through that year and, and all that to see how it was. But one other thing that we did do, and again, this, I'm kind of bragging on Bailey here, but prior to coming in, Bailey got wiped by thermostats so that we can actually, you know, I mean, how many times you come in, you see a thermostat set to sixty degrees and that's Friday at four o'clock? I mean, so it runs sixty degrees on cooling from Friday until Tuesday, so this is something we've been able to kind of fix.
Or you have one that's on cool and the other is on heating, they're competing with each other.
Yeah, that happens a lot, yeah. So that's all I've got to cover what you needed, Mr.?
I, I, I think it does, it covers it, but then what, what I really wanted to take out this is, is you know, we're going to work very hard all the time, we're going to work very hard this summer and we're going to, going to go in and, and put some paint on the walls of these buildings, we're going to, we're going to put new windows on these buildings, we're going to, we're going to dress the look of these, I, I, I think, I know we have debates about things all the time, but I, I, I think our campus just needs to look in a way that when people drive through our community, they say, I want my kid to go to school there. And so, so we're, you know, we won't, we're going to work very hard for that. I think that in turn helps our enrollment numbers, which then helps our revenue, which helps everything, so, so I think it all intertwines and works together and so I appreciate, appreciate that work. You know, you were talking about kids helping with the mulch, we've had discussions about kids helping with the painting also and so there, there's opportunities to look at doing some things like that and, and I, I, I think, I think also, you know, the better we take care of what we got, it makes it easier whenever the day comes and we say, hey, we need to ask for a small village to do this and that and the other if our people think we're taking good care of what we've got to. And so, so I think that's important and I, I appreciate your efforts on that, I appreciate the efforts of the principals on that. So thank, thank you, Blaine, for your presentation.
On, on the community service hours for the, the students, are we going to do a, like an announcement for that and see who's interested in that?
We can make that happen.
I think that'd be a good idea, try to get as much help as possible, that helps them and helps us too, so.
All right, we're, we're kind of on a tight schedule now because we've got a lot of activities to get to, but, especially for the board, but, but administrative leave reports, I'm, I'm not really going to go person to person, does anybody have anything you need to report for your building or, or anything? Yes, sir?
I did, I did just want to say, you know, as part of our safety improvements that we're doing this summer is, you know, a lot of the fencing, the playground fencing. And so one thing as a, as kind of an administrative team that we decided is really important is trying to secure our playgrounds after, after hours because, you know, we've had, we just have had ongoing issues with vandalism and playground equipment getting damaged and that stuff is not cheap. You know, Bruce was telling me he replaced a thirty-six inch tube for two thousand dollars, you know, on his playground. And so with this new fence, one thing we're, we are planning on doing and we just wanted to make you aware so you can help relay the message is we are planning on locking our, our playgrounds after hours. And that is, we feel like as a community, we have, you know, and the city's grown, we have definitely more opportunities now for, for other playground access. You know, we've got Mitchison Park and they got the college park now and then at St. Paul, they have the, the Stevens Park. Yes, and so, so we just want to put it out there, this is not, you know, many, and, and to mean to upset anyone, but, you know, we have to protect our equipment because it's our kids that are suffering from it. I think Jennifer, just over the last year, has had that big slide broken and her tire swing and, I mean, other stuff, but.
So just dangerous things that are left on the playground that kids find.
Yeah.
Will they, will the gates be locked?
No, well, the playground gate, the playground gates will have a padlock, but it's part of our new key system. And so you can use, you know, as part of that Grandmaster Key System, those keys will unlock the padlocks. So, so they won't have to have an extra key just for that, they can use their, their classroom key. So it'll, it'll, so it's still just one key, so it, it won't be, you have to have this one separate key for the playgrounds. So it, as far as our staff are concerned, it should be fairly easy, you know, for them to unlock that during the day, just close to that.
Have you heard anything about the bus burning with our columns updated?
We, we filed, we filed on insurance with it, Harry was out today and so I didn't get a chance to talk to him today, but as of a couple of days ago, we hadn't heard any more. We hadn't heard any more yet on the report as to what has happened, well, you know, there, there was an investigative report filled out on it.
We, we, Friday, we talked, we talked to the sheriff's office and talked to the fire investigator or, or the, the fire department down there who has communicated, the fire investigator, we still haven't gotten anything finalized. I mean, on our end, we still have gone ahead and filed, you know, we've already filed the police report, I mean, the, well, the police report obviously, that, with the claim with the insurance and, and are working through that. And then, I'm sorry, I did just have one more on the technology side. If you're at St. Paul, you've probably noticed there's been some equipment on site this week or last week for construction equipment, that's part of our e-rack projects that we've done to bury fiber between the buildings to improve kind of our, our broadband down there. And we are, hopefully, we've been, we're supposed to be over this last year, but we are moving Ozarks Go down there away from Windstream, which we're very excited about. So, so we're looking forward to being able to provide them more reliable, better quality internet service down there.
That's all right, Matt, anything we need to know about school-based health clinics?
They're rolling, they're seeing patients and everything's going great. They've got physicals scheduled for St. Paul, I think on the twenty-first or twenty-second, I think Bruce was going to try to move it to the twenty-second and I haven't heard whether they got that moved or not, but. And then up here on still, I think the twenty-third is free physicals and last I heard, they were still talking about where that was going to be, whether it was going to be in the activity center or the school-based health clinic. Originally, we had talked about doing it in the school-based health clinic just to promote, promote them going through there and seeing the doctor there. They're doing some stuff for Teacher Appreciation Week this week, I think Kelly's put together some goodie bags for the teachers just to kind of promote coming and seeing them at the clinic and I think they're doing some drawings for some gift cards and stuff like that, so. They're rolling, lots of good things happening with it and we're sending in, you know, of course, we've got that grant. We have to send in for reimbursement every month for that, so I've been taking care of that and trying to stay on top of that, so. Spend a lot of money to get it renovated and then we get that money back, so.
Okay, thank you. Land sale on Highway twenty-three north, we're somewhere between Mr. Allred and Waco now, that, that's all, all I know is I met with Waco on Friday and, and we are, we are, we are somewhere in there, but that is. but that is, that is my number one goal, is to have that wrapped up by June thirtieth since we've been working on it now for about eight days. The deadline's on. Compliance with Arkansas Code, that should say six-ten-one-seventeen.
Wait a minute.
That is, I'm sorry.
St. Paul land, it says.
Oh, thank you. I had that down here in another spot too. We had some discussion in, in regards to the land at St. Paul and, and future uses. That fifteen acres next to the school has been purchased. And I know we've, we've had some discussions as to what, I've had a lot of phone calls or some phone calls about it, what that land's going to be used for. I have talked to the mayor and they do have, I'm not sure if the city council or a planning commission meeting next Tuesday night, but either way I will be there and I would hope that you and, or both of y'all might be there with me to find out there is some discussion about what the use of that land will be. I've had people say, you know, it's going to be a campground. I've had a, and then the mayor told me it's going to be homes and, of course, we, you know, where homes would, would, I would assume be a good thing and it would bring kids and be good as long as they're good homes right next to our campus and, and, and as long as there's a safety barrier there between our kid and that.
Campground doesn't sound good, yeah.
But, but until we, until we meet with the city, we don't really know. And so next Tuesday night, I'm, I'm hoping we'll be able to, to find out some more information on that. And then the compliance with Arkansas Code sixteen-one-seventeen, we already talked about that. That's the compliance to stay on the four-day week. That was in the report to the public. I'm gonna move D and E down to the bottom there under new business to see out-of-state travel because we have some additional things to add there. So let's move to new business, item A. As we sit right now, we are at three million ninety-nine thousand dollars on our baseball and softball facility. What we currently have at that dollar amount is we have a building. We have the dirt work for the softball field. And then we have the dirt work, the dirt work for the baseball field that is just a few feet behind third base and then swings out deeper to center field and deeper to outfield because that is the way that the land falls. At the last month's meeting, we talked about that and, and the, my desire, while we have the equipment there, to go ahead and expand that out where we could turn that into a practice facility. We got a number on that and that number was high. And so in, in meeting with Tyson from Kenco, we, you know, and he agreed. He's gone back and they've done, done some work on that and, and he's talked to subcontractors and tried, tried to work out and, and I think we have some new numbers for tonight, is that correct?
That's correct.
Let, let's talk about the dirt project first, please.
So we, we met with the engineer and the architects and kind of worked through the layout of that baseball field, got a work position. We shifted it back a little bit and lowered it to where we could eliminate that retaining wall that was super expensive. So, so we did that and now just the earthwork price to get the baseball field to, I think it was three-twenty down the sides.
Three-twenty down the sides, three-fifty to center.
Three-fifty to center is like two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to do all that dirt work out there.
Okay, so, so as, as we sit right now, anything over, up to three million was all donated. That was, that was donated. So, so we have the ability to expand that field on out where it is three-twenty down the lines, three-fifty in center. I know you and I measured Mitchson and, and that's somewhat consistent with what it is, I believe.
Yeah, I think we had, which we use Google Earth, but it's usually pretty accurate. I think the deepest point in Mitchson is three-thirty-five.
Yeah. Is it seven?
Yeah, we're getting a little bit more.
I thought it was three-twenty-five or three. It's about three-twenty, I'm not lying.
Three-twenty, like left center is about three-thirty-five. It's not even center field, it's the deepest point, but.
Well, that's pretty deep for a baseball field.
No, that, that's a baseball field. So it's about as small as you can get.
Actually, recommended minimum is three-hundred in the corners and three-fifty in center. But we, we looked that up and tried to make sure we were meeting the minimum requirement.
Yeah, we want, we want to be able to play tournaments there, so we want to be able and, and now, now, you know, with a secondary field, you could actually, you know, you have this field and Mitchson, you could actually host some pretty good tournaments here if the opportunity presented itself. So, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars would allow us to push the dirt to get out to those dimensions.
Correct, yep.
Okay?
And hydro seating.
And hydro seating.
And hydro seating.
Yes, yes. So, so then, for the sake of discussion and argument, we begin to talk about, okay, we get that into a practice field, all right? Now you hit a, you hit a fly ball to left field and it rolls and it goes to where the fence would be and then it's like that all the way to the creek. And you could, you could be chasing balls forever out there. You could lose them and there'd be, and we begin, we begin to look at the fact that probably needs to be a fence out there to catch the balls on both the baseball and softball field. And we begin to look at what would take, just enclose it and truly have the chain link in place on both fields. So what, what did that number, where are we at with that number?
So we've got, we got figured a six-foot fence at the outfield fence and then down the sides, we got a four-foot tall fence and then we've got a backstop figured in there that's twenty-foot tall for both the softball and the baseball. And then on that, the perimeter side fence, we got the yellow safety cap that goes on there so it wouldn't reach over, you're not getting crushed in the ribs.
Don't cut your arms, yeah.
But all that fence price is a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars for all of that.
So here, here, here.
That would meshed it.
Here is.
Which does not include the mesh.
Yep. Here is what I'm thinking. Don't tell me what you're thinking. The equipment's there, everything's in place. Why would we not go ahead and do the dirt work and get it in place? Basically, we would be getting the dirt work and the hydro seating in for a baseball and a softball field. We would be getting an indoor practice facility and all of it would be for two hundred and sixty-five thousand plus ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, this school district would be getting all of that. We need, we would need approval on the dirt work fairly quickly because the dirt work is taking place right now for the building. I, I would, I would like to also consider going ahead and putting the fencing up, but it's not on quite the deadline and we could get a little closer to the end of the year and see how we're going to finish this year and where we are financially as we finish the year before we do the fence unless you all are just sure you want to do fence and you want to move on forward with it. And if, if you do that, that's fine also, your, your decision. My, my thought would be it is made, my thought would be to recommend that we move forward with the dirt work and we, 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 we have the money to do that, we can make that work. Give us another month to see where we are financially as we end the year and then we could come back with a better idea on whether we could do the fencing. Yes, man?
There is an MLB grant, at least there was, Coach, Coach Harris talked about doing it, but we didn't have the phones to do softball too. If we could look into that.
We could look into it, I don't know anything about it.
So that would, it could at least cut our costs quite a bit.
So Coach Harris?
Yeah, he's not here anymore.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
But, I mean, the information is still there, I mean.
I'll look at it and see what I found.
I mean, he had one found that was a fifty-fifty matching grant to do the whole thing, so.
On the dirt work, the added dirt work, I mean, as far as rates wise, are they consistent with what they originally bid?
Yeah, the, the cost per cubic yard of dirt that they're moving was consistent with what they originally.
That's, you know, sometimes you can get some of that's on a project and they, they know that they're already there, they can, they can gouge a little bit.
Right.
I'm saying that they are, but, you know, that, that does happen.
We, we're disappointed with Kenco if that happens.
We credit the numbers and then, as we've priced it up multiple times, that price is safe and consistent.
Yeah. I just, that was one question that I had that I wanted to make sure, you know.
Getting rid of the retaining wall, that's gonna take.
It, it's eliminated, yes, sir, by, by dropping the.
Lowering the field a couple of feet and then shifting it next to the west, yeah.
They were able to eliminate the retaining wall.
And then moving and everything's already.
Already fair to deal, all that stuff, okay.
I'm just gonna make sure we wouldn't.
All that stuff, okay.
And from an engineering standpoint, as far as, you know, water runoff and everything, lowering that field two foot is not gonna affect any of that.
That was my concern.
Yeah.
No, it actually helps it because it's at the end of the hill out there and it gets us closer to the creek.
Okay.
Which all the water's kind of flowing out like.
Okay.
Yes, sir, interest in proceeding on with that?
I mean, it's gonna be a waste if we don't and so then we're.
It's never gonna be cheap, cheaper to the school. It's always gonna cost us more because we'll have to cover.
We have two process fields now by a practice facility that's already there. I, I would make a motion that we proceed with the dirt that weighed on the fence.
And depending, depending on how we, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I want to go back to finances real quick. Okay, so we're, we're at, we're at three million ninety-nine thousand as we said.
Four hundred and seventy-one, yeah, not, yeah, four hundred and seventy-one.
Right now. We have up to three billion from the foundation, correct? So the, the three hundred and some odd thousand that we proved last month for the retaining.
That went in, that is already included in the three point.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure that that was already figured into the, the three.
Correct, Tyson?
Yeah, three million ninety-nine thousand includes the, the movement of the pond and the softball field.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We had, we had some savings there from, from, remember we took the sprinkler, sprinkler system went out, the underground.
So as of right now.
You're on the hook for ninety-nine thousand dollars.
On the hook for ninety-nine thousand dollars.
Period.
And then we are going to be on the hook for the two thirty-six or whatever it was.
Two seventy-four, thank you for that.
Two sixty-five.
Two sixty-five, okay.
And that's both fields leveled and hydro sprayed.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So we make it happen.
I, I would recommend then that we move forward with, with the dirt work on the baseball and softball fields as presented by Kenco.
Can I get a motion to, 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 Josh, can I get my call on favor?
All right, thank you. Audit.
Right, you gotta let me leave, Tyson. You're, you're gonna be here forever.
Thank you, Tyson. Audit, you all, you all had the, the, I believe the audit was sent to you in March, about the third or fourth week of March, you've all had an opportunity to, to review that. We do need to approve the audit for twenty twenty-four. The only, the only real question that came up on the audit, and Tina, you help me as we go here, but within regards to, to the way some of our forms, I believe, were turned in on our, on our free introduce count and, and you all addressed that even before the audit with a change in policy back in, I believe, November or December that, that eliminated those questions. And so we have, we had actually addressed that concern. Moving into that, the other item that was noted on there was, and I believe it was COVID money, is that correct? There was a piece of playground equipment that we were trying to get all of the COVID money spent out at the end of the year and I think that we might not have gone through, this, this was, of course, the year before I was here. So I think we might not have gone, gone through the proper channels on a bid on that. No, I should shake your head no.
If we're talking about the same thing, which I think we are, it was a two-year process. It took forever to get, it, there was a long, long delay and we kept, I thought we had in, the original letter said we had until December to spend that money from the Department of Ed. Said you have till this December to spend the money. We're waiting for Noah's Playgrounds, who said, who we bought, to get it to us. And there was a huge delay and I kept saying, we gotta have this paid for by December. Well, then in the meantime, Tina can help me with that, they changed that to, no, it has to be spent by September.
October, I think.
October. And I wasn't aware of that. And so I didn't spend it till after October and then had to go back and do some, send in extra paperwork.
That, that one was not a significant thing.
No, it wasn't very much.
So those two items were the only two items on there. Other than that, I mean, we had a very good audit. I think that everything was in place as it should be and, you know, I know that's, that's a nerve-wracking time for everyone, but, but you all have had an opportunity, does anybody have any questions about the audit that was presented to you? Then I would recommend that we approve the audit of, of two thousand and twenty-four.
Most of us Steve, say goodbye Natalie, on favor.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we have a few out-of-state travel and we have Mr. Twurds here with us tonight to, to, to speak about Skills USA and we had, we have a couple of state winners. Is that, and, and now national champion, opportunities? So, so you introduce them and maybe say a few things about this?
So each of these young men are representing the, our two state champions for skills. Braxton in computer programming and Carter Combs in skills quizzable, excuse me. They, they've both been, well, all of them, not just these two specifically, have been working really hard to get where they've been and they're actually both going to, hopefully, be going to nationals this year, just like we did last year. So Braxton had something for us. I kind of, Skills is all about having the, the students, you know, step forward and do that, gain the skills and that they need for the, the wider world. So I'm gonna let these two speak for a minute on.
So we were just wanting to request the approval for six students and one advisor to travel to Atlanta, Georgia from June twenty-third to the twenty-seventh to attend the Skills USA National Conference. We earned our spot at the national conference by competing at the state level and winning gold. And now we have the opportunity of representing not just Huntsville High School, but the whole state of Arkansas at the national level. So I feel like that's a really good opportunity to take, to take advantage of. To make this trip possible, we're asking for approval to use a district short bus and the gas card for travel expenses. And then we'd be extremely grateful for any other additional financial support that you guys could provide. We're doing a lot to help fundraise and try to get that ready since we spent most of our money going to state. So we're trying to get some of that back so we can head to nationals, so.
All six of you young men?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd be the advisor.
Yes, so we all need to learn. We all need to.
Did you say how much? Do you know how much it's gonna cost?
I don't know how much it's possibly.
Usually in previous years, it's cost us about like fourteen thousand dollars or so. We have a much smaller group this year and so we're hoping to save money on the housing and that we'd be staying at an Airbnb. We're in talks with the gentleman that we've worked with for a few years now. Last year it cost us about fifty-five hundred dollars, but hopefully we'll be able to get something a bit cheaper since it's a smaller group than that.
So you all are asking for approval from the board tonight for out-of-state travel?
Yes, sir.
And, okay, we, we also, and where are they going?
Yeah, they're going, they're going Kansas City.
Kansas City, all right. And St. Paul FCC LA is, is also asking for out-of-state travel.
And. They said that's also our FCC.
And that's also your FCC also, all right? Okay. Okay, any others? I know it's late in the year and we've got a lot of trips coming. All right, then we would be asking, uh, I would recommend then that we approve the travel, out-of-state travel for, uh, the band, Kansas City, for FCC LA, for both St. Paul and Huntsville, and for our young men who did a wonderful job tonight from Skills USA to continue their quest to move towards, uh, competing in nationals. Uh, I would recommend that we approve the out-of-state travel for each one of those.
I make a motion.
Steve, all in favor?
All right.
Congrats, guys.
Thanks, Dave.
We have. Good job. Congratulations.
Proud of you.
Have a fun trip. I know that there was, uh, one other thing on the technology side, uh, you know, Bailey, we needed to get approval on?
Yep, you should have a handout in your front pocket. Uh, so I I apologize. I I got with, uh, Mr. Law as he was walking back from the copy after he'd already sent you guys the agenda for for tonight. So, uh, but it is a little time since we've been, we're trying to kind of wrap up some last-minute projects for the year. Uh, and so really, we're we're, uh, uh, we are asking for three things for board approval. Um, the first one is, uh, well, and I personally want to say, we currently do not have, you know, one of the nice, one of the nice benefits, I guess, of of COVID money was, you know, we had all this money to buy student devices and upgrade our, you know, upgrade a bunch of technology and, uh, but along with that is there's no additional ongoing money to help, you know, make sure that we're able to maintain and replace that technology. Uh, so one of the benefits that, you know, of meeting that seventy percent and being able to double our federal funding and your ESA funding is, you know, we can take that additional funding and put it right back into the into the classroom so it benefits the teachers and the students. And so we have worked, uh, Tasha and I have worked closely on developing a Chrome rotation schedule and a and a instructional device or staff device replacement schedule on a five-year cycle. And so that is what this is hoping helping to achieve. Um, so we we can already tell next year roughly, you know, how much we'll budget out of, uh, that ESA funding to be able to put towards this. Um, so this is what we're, we had kind of set aside and we wanted to wait till we got to the end of the year to make sure we felt comfortable with it still. But this is what we feel like we, uh, want to do and can afford to do for this year. And this would be part of our summer, uh, improvements. But I did just want to highlight that that's part of, you know, as part of that additional ESA funding, you know, we we really want to highlight that this is exact, this is a benefit of that. This is a direct result of that and it's going back into the classrooms of the teachers and students. Um, so the first line item is, uh, seven hundred and forty-five Chromebooks. Uh, the total cost, the lowest bid was two eighty-nine, uh, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. I would like to ask, you know, that's the number, but up to three hundred thousand dollars that, because right now with the tariffs and everything, the prices are fluctuating daily. Um, so that's that's what I'm asking for is two hundred and eighty-nine, but up to three hundred, not to exceed three hundred. Um, the next one is fifty-five instructional devices, uh, for total cost of fifty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-five, but not to exceed fifty-eight thousand. And then the last one, uh, which is coming out of Title IV funding, um, is, um, we're able to purchase, um, one of our safety improvements that we've been trying to achieve is is replace our interior room signage that the district uh, with updated signage that's braille. It has the little windows that you can slide in and out the the teacher's name. So we're not having to buy a new one every year as teachers change rooms and that kind of thing. And so that would be district-wide. And so the the total cost for that's thirty-two thousand two hundred and seventeen, but I'd asked for not to exceed thirty-eight. And that was just because, you know, when you try to replace four hundred some signs, I know we're gonna forget some. Uh, and, you know, a- as we're still locking in that pricing, because that this pricing was from February when we were exploring that for the safety grant. Uh, I did just want to say we went through the, you know, went through the requirements. We have three bids, more, at least three or more bids for all this. Two of the vendors are tips vendors anyways, uh, so we're kind of covered in both directions on that one. Um, so, yeah, so that's why that's what we're here and trying to put before you guys to to get through, uh, if we can, so we can start getting that ready.
I think it's a lot of work went into helping us get that additional money. And, uh, then these are the examples of good things that can be done with that. Uh, they'll benefit students and, uh, I appreciate all the work staff did to do that. Appreciate the work, taking place to get this here. So, uh, uh, I don't know why you'd be quite.
Yeah, and just to make it clear for everybody.
Yep.
These are funds that can only be used for these certain kinds of things.
Yeah, we we're, you know, we're limited on what these funds can be used for. They can't be used for construction or, you know, those types of things. Like, and that's part of what we, you know, like that, that's what we, when we went to the parents and community and asked for this, like, this is what we said, you know, it's going, like, you filling out these forms is gonna directly benefit your child, your community, your students and staff. And so that that is a direct result of this. This will allow us to be able to have a replacement control. And so, you know, every five years, we'll be able to replace the devices for staff and students. And, uh, so this will just make sure that we continue to do our best effort on making sure they always have a reliable technology device.
I think this is awesome because we need that rotational, because I'm really worried about our air conditioners. We did that all at one time.
We're gonna go in.
So this is a much better plan for our technology. That's great. I know that Blaine had nothing to do with that. That is not. Blaine's concerned about the same thing.
I would recommend then that we we proceed with with, uh, this as presented. The only thing I would, uh, amend is that total cost on item number one, I would say it should be three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that says two eighty-nine, eight fifty-five, uh, but not to exceed. So I would, I would, let's let's move back to three hundred thousand on that first line and then, uh.
Fifty-eight on the second, thirty-nine.
Yeah, that's really, yeah, that's really what I'm asking. Like, I would, I'd ask that you prove the maximum, knowing that, you know, it should be.
And hope we will work backwards from there and on forward. That would be my recommendation.
Can I get your motion to approve Steve, then Connie, all in favor?
Thank you for all the work that went into that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I I mean, I'm very excited. We're gonna see a lot of awesome improvements over the summer.
Yep.
I mean, not just technology, but just all the different projects we've got going on.
Dr. Williams? Good to see you. Twenty-two minutes over. I'm sorry about that. We, it's about as quick as we can go, though. You gonna need a break? You wanna take a quick break or anything?
I'm gonna keep, I'm moving forward. We're gonna be here for about three more hours.
We're too delighted to know I did carry a pistol. Except on school property.
Dr. Williams, who you really need here tonight for the board?
Thank you, guys.
Did a great job.
Like, he's still a child.
Are you all okay with that, Dr. Williams?
Yes.
In fact, I'll get up. Here, Dre, you can have this. This this is the official seat anyways.
Thank you, thank you.
What are you doing?
Mitch and I enjoy coming to Huntsville, Arkansas. It has been a pleasure of working with y'all. And the one thing that I like to make note of is the fact that you people appear to like each other. That's good. Because because we we have been some places where people just don't like each other and it shows.
I don't know if I miss Florida. And we're not sure about Steve.
That's right. I'm the one they love to have.
So you just allow that.
He's our entertainment. Steve's our crazy uncle.
Well, that makes it fun for us because, uh, we like to work with people that are diligent in, uh, in their service and y'all are that.
Y'all.
Also, uh, well, that's that's good. That's gonna emphasize something I wanted to hear for about ten minutes before we actually get into the talking with Mr. Chalk about setting some goals with y'all and y'all communicating him what you want him to accomplish here in the next year, two, three years hence. And that's that's very important. But also the staff that made presentations and that were very thorough and, uh, very informative for y'all. And Mr. Walton and I both have been there and know what that's like and and we appreciate their work as well. I gave you a booklet. We're just gonna work through this booklet and there's some things here that I feel like are worthwhile and and this this form we are in, in working with you and facilitating some, uh, objectives for Mr. Chalk to look at and goes for the next few years, working with you. On the first page, you'll notice the agenda things. We're just gonna spend a few brief moments talking about leadership traits, team-building activity, the determined expectations and setting some, uh, performance objectives here for his first year. And maybe some of it might be much longer than just one year, but get started on this first year as he moves in as your new superintendent. Look on page three. Your first impression, what do you see?
Cruella de Vil from One Hundred and One Dalmatians.
I see a pretty lady.
Miss Kitty.
Yeah, Miss Kitty does look like Miss Kitty. Nobody else is this old and you meet Steve and nobody is.
How many of you see a pretty, a lady that's pretty?
Yeah, I'm a kitty.
Absolutely.
How many of you see someone that looks, uh, kind of like a witch to a certain degree? Well, it took me years before I could ever see the, uh, the odd lady, the old lady. I always saw the pretty. But then finally one time when I was on a computer looking at it and it brought it out, then it showed me, or allowed me to see the see the the true image of the old lady. The people, the the reason for this, a little little note is, uh, there's a reason for that and that is this. We do not always see the same things in the same way. And your source of information as a board is gonna most of the time give you a very slanted view. Especially when you're involved with kids, uh, most of us parents are very biased toward our own. And, uh, Noah Superintendent told me one time, said, you like to hear about both sides, but usually the truth is somewhere in the middle. And that as a board, you're gonna find yourself in situations where you're not gonna see it the same way. But, uh, you may have to work as a team to come up and and always, uh, try to come to some consensus. Okay, personality traits. Look on page four. Now, this this can be very useful for you personally and if you haven't done it before and also, uh, for Mr. Chalk as he can see, the personality traits that will kindly define what you are and how you operate. Now, notice, notice what we have. We have four columns. Are you with me? Four columns on two pages. The columns, I want you to look at these columns going horizontally across. And when you look at those four words, what I want you to do is mark the word quickly that you think applies to you. Which word do you think describes you? And don't linger on it, but just very quickly, you go horizontally toward all both pages. Down at the bottom, total total number of marks between the vertical lines of each one and then we'll carry that over to the second page. Be quick as you do it. Look, score quickly and move on.
Is it supposed to be just this page and this page presentation?
Right, yeah.
Okay, now it's.
They're overachievers right here. They're overachievers right here.
You gonna get that pine fresh now.
We'll see ya.
So now you're gonna get your scores vertically under each one of those, uh, four columns and have a score over on the page to the right, totals for both pages. Total checks for each vertical column. Now, you should probably have one column that that's the highest in number of checks. And then you may have another one that may be close to it, but you should have one column that is that is the, uh, has the largest number of checks for the vertical column. Okay, you see which column now you have the most number of, uh, of marks vertically? Now, turn over to page number five. And those those four, uh, squares or rectangles there define different types of personalities.
You mean six and seven?
I mean, six and seven, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Six and seven, I'm sorry. Just checking you, see if you're paying attention. Now, notice the one, the the vertical column that you had the most marks and see if it's one, two, three, or four in regards to these, uh, personality traits.
That's very much.
Now, what I want you to do, I'll start with Mr. Chalk and I'm gonna let him divide, uh, define himself in regards to what his personality is and tell us if it, if this, uh, uh, assessment is pretty accurate in defining how he works, how he thinks, how he acts. Then we're gonna go through each one of you. I want him to be able to see how each one of you, uh, bear out when it comes to determining your personality. Mr. Chalk, are you ready?
Yes, sir. So Taskmaster Master was my first one.
Okay.
With a ten and then Mainstay was second with a nine. And, yeah, that's that's.
Pretty accurate.
Pretty spot on.
Yeah.
Two or three points under each one of them, which you feel like are very strong for you?
Uh, strong work ethic, competitive.
Okay.
Leadership.
Okay.
And then, yeah, things to work on, avoid aggression, listen more intently. And then Mainstay. Oh, content with others in my life, for sure. Loyal.
You don't stay angry for weeks after something happens?
No, I usually get over it.
Get over it.
There's too much going on. It's spiritual for sure.
Okay, very good. Now, you can see he, you can, now, when you look at a at a number, his number one choice was Taskmaster. You can understand from looking at that now how he's gonna be a leader and and not only expect, he, those expectations are gonna transfer. About two hundred and seventy-five people, I'm guessing, that work in this district. And and they will see that, but then the Mainstay kind of tempers some of that down. Ms. Whitney?
Yep.
Okay, let's let's let her, which one are you?
Well, I'm Mainstay. I have nineteen on Mainstay.
Nineteen?
I was zero on the first one and the third one, so.
I was gonna say, we're even more.
Does that define you, you feel like? What are the main points that?
Pretty much all of it, except for the states angry. I really don't stay angry.
Don't stay angry very long? Well, when you work with pre- pre-K like you do preschool kids, I don't say you.
You can stay angry.
You'd be angry twenty-four hours a day, three to sixty-five days a year, wouldn't you? Okay. Over here?
Taskmaster.
Taskmaster?
At twelve.
Twelve, okay.
Yep, and then I had seven on the physical, so.
You feel like that's pretty accurate for you?
I do, yeah, yeah, competitive. I do, yeah, yeah, competitive, takes risks, strong work ethic, thinks gray area, that might be a little bit. And then as far as, you know, like the first column there, you know, enjoys freedom, very verbal, I don't, I don't shut up much, so.
Come on, Toby.
Very good. So we have a, we have an enthusiast, we have a Taskmaster and a Mainstay, okay? Let's go with Ms. Connie.
That won't be a surprise. Taskmaster.
And what grade did you teach?
Anywhere from seventh to twelfth in science.
I bet you they loved it in your class.
They did. Well, that one, that was that one.
Okay, I just get it.
I didn't have it when she was a student.
Yes.
Oh, you did, okay. Well, does that clearly define you, you feel like?
Probably not politically wise, though.
What was your second?
My, oh, there was a tie between enthusiast and Mainstay, which.
So you're sort of well-rounded then, aren't you? What about you?
Uh, Taskmaster and Mainstay. And yeah, it pretty much sums me up.
Are you pretty heavy on the Taskmaster?
Nineteen.
Do you have any guys working for you?
Nope. I work for my wife on the farm. If it had been slave, that's where I'd have been.
Ms. Wauffer, what about you?
Mine was Taskmaster and then enthusiast.
Taskmaster and enthusiast.
They're very much on the spot.
Okay, Mr. Bobby?
Taskmaster and Mainstay, seven on each.
You, that's interesting, cause there's more Taskmasters.
I don't agree with the stay angry when upset.
Okay.
I can be angry.
I've never done that before. It makes you angry when you stay angry. But usually you'll have more diversity amongst a board of seven than that in regards to the Taskmaster, but that'll help Mr. Chalk, I think, sometimes in how he works and how he gathers information, how he shares it with you and also maybe your understanding of how he deals with people and he might have the expectation that most people work for the district need to do their job. And being accountable, those type of things, I think, all fit into that.
Sounds like me.
Now.
I, well, I think it's because we can all be Taskmasters because on enthusiast it says humorous and we're also gonna take ourselves over serious.
Mitch is gonna take care of this next one, eight and nine. Turn to eight, eight and nine. Now, this, this is, this is a little bit of thinking outside the box somewhat. Read that first line there. This test does not measure your intelligence.
Yes, sir.
Your fluency with words and certainly not your mathematical ability, okay? Now, it says, this will give you a gauge of your mental flexibility and creativity. So now, just get a little thought here. Don't start cheating yet, looking down through here, okay? Now, each question below contains the initials of words that will make it correct. In other words, you have a number that the example there is sixteen equals O-N-A-P. What is that? Sixteen ounces in a pound, okay? Now, start looking down that, we're gonna, how many minutes we need to spend on that?
My gosh.
Most of them, we'll get them, get through them, they're not lingering. Just get started, start looking through. Yeah, this would be a good exercise for y'all. I wish we could. Start, start looking at the numbers and then equals whatever that, those initials are, those, those letters are.
Do we write it out? That's what?
You can just write it out to the side. Yeah. First one that gets done, raise your hand.
Yeah.
I'm really gonna lie, this is my last meeting, so. I'm just saying. I'm going back to that strong will or whatever. Skip the ones you don't know, we'll come back to them.
There you go, there you go. This is just a fun exercise to see how you think outside the box a little bit. The creativity side of your mind. Do what?
I got a zero in creativity.
Mr. Wilson doesn't realize how much fun he's missing.
Who came up with these? I wanna know. That was the email address.
This is the entrance exam to Harvard University, okay?
Don't be helping me. Don't be helping.
I got three. I got a couple different ones for that, so. Okay, it can be either one. It could. I mean.
Yep. Oh, goodness.
See, I said I was done. I had a competitive bag from those.
Reinvigorated. Jay, in a year they're gonna give me this test again, deep dive in group.
I'm resigning. I'm already got it here, I I went through the police academy in 2005.
We turn these into the county clerk, but that way they'll determine if you're up for running.
That would be a good thing. They laugh when I'm inside up. How many of y'all got an answer?
Four.
All right, go on.
Got eight. Seventeen.
I got nineteen.
You got nineteen?
Yeah.
Were you cheating, Tommy? Were you looking at that?
No, I don't, I'm not, I'm not an answer to cheat, no. You got some answers that I don't, so. How would you know that if you not been looking at it?
You always wanna sit on the left hand. Sit here right handed.
She's left handed, I'd have to go on this.
Oh, that's true, you have to look really crazy to see which one wrote it.
How many have you got twenty so far? Anybody got twenty?
I've got nineteen.
I'm curious about scientific, right?
And I've pretty much come to a standstill with my brain.
I don't like those, that plate, it's sounding embarrassing. You down there?
And Bobby, the one that didn't miss you, the one that didn't miss you.
You said something about the SS and I put men on it. Then I scribbled it up. No, I'm done with it, guys. I'll be honest with you.
We get everybody back in here, we'll.
You said, I just give you the answer on that.
We'll get Ms. Connie back in here, we'll.
I got twenty now.
Looking forward. Have any?
I got twenty now.
Well, good, good deal.
Started talking on there.
So you, means you're a good listener.
Well, sometimes you gotta get slapped just to like that watch you own. But they some reason.
I think I got number fifty right. That ain't changed, fine, I'm done.
Can you do your fourth one?
You already got that one, that was the one I forgot.
Double O equals JB.
I got five now.
I had a boat flag that said double O seven on the door.
I got the two I think that are written in the ball.
We'll get everybody back in here, we'll get started.
You get one, you look at one, don't you?
I, I wanna know, here's what I wanna know, first of all. What was your strategy? How did you get started? What, what was your, your first inclination when you saw this?
Mr. Chalk said, hey, look at number fifty.
Look, look at, look at the last one first?
Yeah.
I was to go through and get everything that I was sure of and then go back.
Okay, okay. Any, any, any other secrets of the trade here?
Well, once you got going, then it kinda helped you get some of the other ones.
Okay. How many, you said, how many did you get, Jay?
Don't mean you got them right.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, five?
Eight.
Eight?
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Ten.
Ten?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. That's not bad, really. That's not, that's pretty good. I'm not gonna tell you what. Mr. Wi, Dr. Williams over here and I, we're not gonna tell what we started out with, so. Anyway, y'all did good, pretty good. In the short amount of time that you had on this, now, let's just go, just walk through some of this real quick. Who got number one? What is it?
Twenty-six letters in the alphabet.
Very good. What about number two? What'd you get?
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week. What about number three? Anybody get number three? Okay, thousand and one, Arabian Nights.
No, I never would've got.
I wouldn't either.
So, that's fair.
Number four, anybody?
Signs of the Ozzy.
Signs of the Ozzy, well, signs of, what about number five?
Cards in a deck.
With, with, okay, very good. What about number six? Number six?
Planets in the solar system.
Very good.
I could've got that one.
There's only eight now.
Very good. Number seven?
Open chain is killing it, isn't it?
Never underestimate them.
Two degrees Fahrenheit.
Number, go back to number seven. Number, go back to number seven, eighty-eight. Eighty-eight, what is that one?
I don't know.
Piano keys.
I don't know.
I'm not very used.
Number eight, thirteen?
Thirteen stripes on the American flag.
There you go. Thirteen stripes, American flag, number nine, what was that one? Mr. Gold?
Did you get nine?
Number nine?
Number nine? No, I didn't get it.
Okay.
There didn't you get greens?
The greens Fahrenheit.
Water free.
Yeah.
It's switch water freeze, okay. Number ten, eighteen?
Holes on a golf course.
Holes on a golf course.
I didn't get that one.
Number eleven, ninety?
The greens in a right angle.
Very good.
I could have got a lease if I had more time.
See there, there you go, it's a matter of time, number, number twelve? Two hundred what? I wouldn't have gotten this one either. Days for Peter the Great in Moscow. Somebody try and be funny on that one there. Uh, number? What about number thirteen?
Thirteen was your next one.
Okay.
Eight sides on a soft side.
I feel like you've been sandbagging over here.
Oh, he never knows nothing.
You know, that's exactly right.
Number fourteen, what's that one?
Competitive, looks on my meal.
Does anybody have fourteen? I doesn't have that one either.
Fourteen. Three blind eyes, see how they run.
Okay.
Four?
Quarts in a gallon.
Okay.
Quarts in a gallon.
Quarts in a gallon, sixteen, twenty-four?
There you go.
Hours in a day.
Hours in a day. Now, seventeen, you got this one, anybody get this one?
No, I didn't.
You get a bonus if you get this one.
World in a year.
One equals? Wheels on a unicycle.
Oh my gosh.
All right.
I've smoked a lot of weed with you.
What is number eighteen, five is, equals what?
Digits in a zip code.
Digits in a zip code. Number nineteen, fifty-seven?
Heinz varieties.
Heinz varieties. There you go. Number twenty, eleven? Eleven? Players in a?
Football.
Football team.
God, I should have known that one.
Number twenty-one, one thousand. If you got this one, I'd be proud of you. Way that a person is wise. Number twenty-two?
Twenty-nine days of February leap year.
There you go. Twenty-three? Sixty-four? Squares on a checkerboard, or chessboard. Number twenty-four? Forty?
Days and nights of the great flood.
There you go.
I told him the great flood, I couldn't get that much.
You tell you what?
He's religious too, he's really.
He's a good thinker here.
He's got us laughing on all of us. He doesn't.
Tell you what. Twenty-five, seventy-six? Seventy-six trombones and? Trombones and a big parade. Okay, fifty?
Fifty ways to lose your lover.
There you go, fifty ways to lead your lover.
Sneak out the back, Jack. Don't need to be coy.
There you go, number twenty-seven, ninety-nine?
Bottle of beer on the lawn.
Okay. Number twenty-eight? Sixty seconds in a minute.
You got something you need to explain?
Number twenty-nine, what's that one?
That's one I don't know.
One?
I don't, I do not know what this was.
Horns on a unicorn.
Oh gosh.
I don't know, I didn't know.
Number nine, thirty, nine? Nine? Justices on the Supreme Court.
Oh, sure, we.
Thirty, I say thirty-one, seven?
Oh, seven bright for seven.
There you go, there you go, that's it. Thirty-two, twenty-one? D on a D? Dots on a dice? Thirty-three, fi- uh, fifteen?
Months on a cer- certain kind of calendar, but I didn't know, is that?
Fifteen? Fifteen men on a dead man's chest. So you got your, you got your literary kind of stuff, you got a little bit of everything here. All right, number thirty-four, five?
Fingers on a hand.
Fingers on a hand, thirty-five, one hundred and nine? This may be different now too, I don't know. Elements on a periodic table.
On a periodic table, but back in your day, there was only like fifty-six.
Number thirty-six, twenty-five? Since in two bits. Sixteen?
This one's about me, I don't know.
Four fours.
Four fours. Number two, no, thirty-eight, no, two? Years before the mast, I don't know exactly what that one refers to, honestly. Thirty-nine, nine? Which I talked about earlier today with your ball fields. Nine?
Innings in a ballgame.
Innings in a ballgame. Number forty, seventy-seven? Used to be a TV show. California, Los Angeles, seventy-seven?
Sunset Strip.
That's an old.
That's an old one, that's exactly right.
No wonder you knew that.
Forty-one, thirteen is what?
Thirteen in a baker's dozen.
Baker's dozen, one thousand, I don't understand this one either, I'll be honest with you. Number, number forty-two? One thousand? Days, queen, uh, uh, days and was queen, I guess an and bowl in, something like that. Number forty-three, one hundred and forty-four?
In a gross.
In a gross. Now, did some of y'all start and go backwards? I noticed what some of you, I, I just kind of walked around and I, I noticed what you were doing there, we're going backward, we went backwards. Three hundred and sixty-six?
Days in a leap year.
Days in a leap year, three?
Feet in a yard.
Feet in a yard, number forty-six, ten?
Well, we have different things, ten years.
In a decade. Forty-seven, one hundred and one? Four, fifty?
Stars on the flag.
Stars on the flag, seven?
Days in a single week?
Nope.
No?
Good guess. It's, it, it's a, it's a Disney feature. Seven dwarfs, so what, there you go, and then? Mr. Gold, what's number fifty?
The double is that?
I'm sure I got it wrong.
No, you got it right. Level oh seven equals?
James Bond.
There you go, all right.
I got a tally.
You got a tally? Yeah, uh, you had twenty, right?
Yes, sir.
Who was the next closest to it?
I think Connie.
I mean, you have?
I'm here, Jen.
Well, I think JB, because when we went through, I had two wrong.
He said seventeen, didn't he?
So I had fifteen.
Fifteen?
I can't remember what I had.
Let me.
I'm down the correct answers as we leave.
Let's look at it this way, as a group, as a unit, you got thirty-two out of the fifty.
Right.
Now, what's the purpose of that? The main purpose of that is to show that you're stronger as a unit than you are as a single board member. You're much stronger as a unit. Decision making from all seven of you is much better than decision making from one. Which is very, very important, very, very important. You good job, guys and gals.
I'd like to get all of our teachers to split us and tell them, pack of teacher appreciation week from the board that's today. If I was completed in twenty more hours.
Tell them to raise this, you'll be defeated by that.
That hate all of us.
Let's look at number eleven for just a minute.
There's a few choice words for these guys.
This is just reviewing things that you already know, but I think it's very important, especially when you have a new leader coming in. The role of the superintendent. And this is from our perspective, when you start looking at the whole picture of running a school district. Number one is rigorous academic progress. Setting expectations, that's, that's, that's a main role of the superintendent. Number two, dealing with alliances and partnerships. That means then that the superintendent has got, will be making any deals, if you're not aware of or approve before it happens. But they're constantly going to be talking with trying to gain partnerships, which will complement what you need in the district. But you will be informed of all those things. Be a coalition, a coalition builder with the big picture. He has got to look at the big picture. Uh, he, he's got to look at more than one baseball field, one FFA club, one, one science department. He's got to look at the big picture, put all those things together, mix them, and then look at the money that's going to take to, to make them all happen. Communicate that education is the backbone of our democratic society, he's going to be the one that models that, you are too. But he will be the model for what education is in the Huntsville city and in this school district. And that's, that's very important for a superintendent. And number six, visibility, visibility, visibility. Now, if you were one of my graduate classes, superintendent of school board relations, when I'm teaching to a bunch of graduate students that aspire to be a superintendent. I'll say, there's two things you need to know. Number one, the first thing, you're, you're going to be evaluated as a superintendent by how well people like you. How well people like you. They're not going to know about how much you know, or how well you manage the budget, or how involved you are in academics. It's how you are liked, if people like you on the streets, they're going to say you're a good superintendent, parents, all of these folks. So that is very, very important, and visibility is one thing that leads to that, visibility. And the sad part about it is I've experienced this and so has me. It's very easy in the beginning to become very visible and out and out, but the first, if you're not careful, and Jay knows this too. It starts piling up and piling on you where you have difficulty of maintaining the visibility, visiting the campuses, going to the meetings in the community, Chamber of Commerce. All of those things are sometimes kind of get left if you're not very, very cautious of that. But visibility is important, now, the role of the board, your role? Your role is, is, is set goals for the district, communicate as a unit what your expectations are for the goals of improving education in a respective community. You are to evaluate the superintendent, the best thing that you can do for a superintendent is give them an honest evaluation. And this, this is done in member, a number of different ways, but it, usually you have single evaluations that are combined together. And the summary of evaluation report from the board that communicates to the superintendent just how they evaluate his or her performance for the preceding year or whatever. An adoption of the operating policies. Many, many times, you'll have boards that'll, and I've worked with a lot of them, they'll say they want the superintendent to follow policy, follow policy. But sometimes when that following policy contradicts what I want as a board member, then policy is not that important. But policy is very, very important, and the superintendent is going to be the one that's, that's probably more knowledgeable than, than anyone in the district in regards to the contents of the policy manual and how to use that to, to function as the leader of the district. Constituency, serve your constituency, board, but now you do this not by just serving the squeaky, squeaky wheel, but you can listen. And the best thing you can do as a board member, now Keith's talking now, he's, he's giving an editorial opinion. But the best thing you can do is when people start wanting to share with you all their burdens and problems, is you remind them that there's a chain of command. Of where they start taking those problems to, after you listen, be sensitive to that, to the lowest level of where they originated. And let it go from there, it may be at the classroom teacher level, it may go to the assistant principal, it may go to the principal, may go to one of these two gentlemen over here that'll take care of anything. Or, if it gets, I'm just kidding, man, if it gets through you, then it will get to Mr. Chalk, and after it gets to Mr. Chalk, the final body is you. You're like the Supreme Court, you're the one that makes the final decision, so if you're, if you're listening to things that you shouldn't be listening to and, and making, and making comments which, which are committal, committing to an individual. On behalf of the board, then you're placing yourself in a very, very precarious position as board members. So best thing to do is listen, then place them, uh, ask them to follow the chain of command and go where the problem originates. The, the next two pages, I'm looking at twelve and thirteen, I'm not going to continue to read, read to you. But I just want to mention a couple of things off of this, this page that I can glean from reading and reviewing this again today. People, if you catch yourself as a board member referring to, I won't, I won't, then you need a shocking color on you and give you a shock like I'm trying to do my little poodle that's in training. You, you don't, when you think I, then most of the time, you're going to be, you're going to be lea- leaving the realm of what the board, and, uh, board's responsibilities are and how they function. We, you function as we, 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 we. And then, of course, when you start talking about we, then you talk about we, what's best for everybody in the district, including students, staff, and, and everyone. The other thing that I would mention from this? Is Mr. Chalk deserves? In the position he's in, as board members, you need to make sure that you communicate to the community that, that any unjust criticism of him, because they do not know the reality of what he's doing, you support him. Now, he, it's okay to criticize him, but when people start making those unjust remarks because of lack of knowledge, and you know what's factual, then you support him and that will reinforce his position in the district. Uh, as the, as the superintendent of the district. So, those are the main things I want to mention, and there's four other pages here of things I think that are very important in regards to board service, superintendent expectations, and I think all those things are very, very good. But I'm not going to, uh, repeat those now because I have you feeling you've been to a number of workshops where you've heard these before. As a starting point, now we're going to get into what we talked about as being phase five of setting some goals outside of the evaluation process. Remember, this is not the board, not the superintendent evaluation, but these are some goals, are things that you want him to look at and work on this coming year that you feel like will improve this district. Now, I'm going to pass to you a copy of the criteria? Which you approved when we started this search process, if I can pass it out, since long since I was in class now, keep passing out papers anymore.
You may not need one of these, you get it when you land.
I need all the help I can get, the blind dog.
Remember every one of them.
Even the blind dog finds an acre and wants to walk.
Okay, now, here's what I'd like for you to do. Look at these five, we call them criteria. Look at these five criteria and see if you can pull out key points or key things that you feel like are very, very important. Not the whole criteria, but just certain points that could possibly be a goal that you as a board would value, and you see importance in, that could become a goal for Mr. Chalk this coming year. Now, we want him to have input in this process as well, because he'll have much more thought and more depth about it than, uh, Mr. Mr. Mitch and I will, when it comes to some of these things. Because he's more current, he's in it every day. So look at that now and see if you can pull out three or four or five common threads. You feel like you've had enough time to do that? Let's, let's just, Meg, you want to record these on the? Things that you feel like that are common threads that are within these five criteria that might be carried forward from this point with Mr. Chalk in regards to him to focus on this coming months, year, two years hence. Ms. Whitney, we'll start with you.
Expanding the career and technical education program and getting, uh, more college courses for our students.
CTE? College, con grant credit type courses, okay? What, what college or university you typically work with on con grant credit year?
I believe it's, it's, or, North Park, yes, Mac.
At Harrison?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, very good.
Create high expectations, or expectation of high performance from all staff and students.
High point now, close?
High performance from all staff and students. High performance from all staff and students.
Ms. Connie?
Creates cohesiveness and unity. When we are all together in on something, we always do better.
Okay. Cohesiveness and unity. Now, you're talking about within the school, in the entire school community, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And our winner for tonight?
Common sense and the people skills to communicate. I just put it.
Understanding of school finance.
Finance. Mr. Bobby?
Display compassion.
Compassion. I remember that's what you told us when we were creating these criteria, wasn't it?
Yes.
Now, Jay, what did you, what did you?
Well, you know, and I think if y'all remember the, the night I interviewed, you know, I mean, blessed that y'all hired me. But I'm gonna relate back to what I told y'all that night when, 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 I can't remember if it was Mitch or Dr. Williams that had sent me these. And I shared them with Jen and she said, "That's you, that's what you do." And, I mean, number one, I've, I've been a superintendent now for seven years, so that's the five years. Underlying curriculum instruction, career tech ed, you know, I'm so proud of, you know, the aviation mechanics program we started. It's gonna be the only one in the state, you know, for high schoolers. And, and that's been my passion and I proved that. And then, you know, the visible in schools and extracurricular activities. I mean, you know, that's, that's the vital key. And I remember meeting y'all's mayor and, and that was the first thing he brought up to me. You know, it was like, "Jay, people wanna see you. They don't know who you are. And then if you're there and they see you, then they'll get to know you." And so, I mean, I put that at the top of my list and then common sense, you know. When I was working on my doctoral degree at Texas, I had an older superintendent who told us, he said, "Y'all need to listen to me. There's gonna be one or two trials or tribulations per year that will direct your career." And, and I really believe you've gotta have common sense and stay ahead of those things and stay on top of them. You can't turn your head or act like something didn't happen, you know. And, and it's, he's been right. There's been one or two a year that...
And you shared one or two of those?
Uh, we had, it was actually about a month and a half ago, a 32-year veteran, one of our best teachers, merit paid teacher at the elementary school, third grade, daughter went home, told her daddy that the teacher threatened to kill her. And so, it was reported to the principal. Principal calls me, "Jay, what do we do?" I said, "Listen, we gotta narrow it down. Let's get on it, call the dad back, tell him we're gonna start watching video, blah, blah, blah." Come to find out, we find the interaction. We had cameras and recorders, audio in the classrooms. And she's, the teacher said, um, um, something to the effect of, "You know, if I was your mama, I'd spank you for that." And the, but the little girl turns around and skips back to the desk. And so, it went from that to, um, the dad then had went, after he reported it to the principal, went to the police department, wanted to file charges. And so, we stayed ahead of it, had the video ready for when the police came in. And, and I don't know if y'all know, it was a great interaction. When I got there, we've, we've got our own Clinton School District Police Department. That took a lot of work. And so, that makes the, it, a very seamless transition with them working together on that. And so, that, that settled that like that. We had the dad, I had him come in, watch the video. He watched it, there's nothing there, end of problem. You know, instead of letting it blow up and get on Facebook and just, just explode from there, so.
Very good point. Very good point. Okay, now.
Sorry, then the last one, school finance. I mean, I know I shared with y'all too. We were on fiscal distress when I got, came home six years ago and we got off the first year. And it's, my theory is pretty simple. We have professionals, we've hired professionals. You know, my job's to form that pie, cut up the slices and say, "Here's your slice. Don't come back asking for another bite. That's your slice." And, and when you do it that way and you expect professionalism out of them, that budget starts taking care of itself and you fall within your budget and then you have the leftover to roll over to next year, so. Sorry, I'm interviewing you.
Very good points, very good points. And I think that, that's, that's a very good explanation of, of those criteria. Now, looking at these board members and also Jay, is there two or three areas there, or two or three things that we could pull out and create as a goal or an objective with some actions that would validate that objective being met or being improved upon the next year or two years? Now, one other thing about that is this, and a good superintendent's gonna be doing this. When you have a, create an action plan like this, there shouldn't be a, there should be a plan where every X number of months, quarterly or whatever, that there's a report given on that specifically about the things that you define as being important. And then, the superintendent will give you some evidences that you're working toward. It may be something on his, like, for example, CTE. This is not something you can create in three months. But there has to be an action plan, some critical thinking upfront, planning, and then how you start working to implement that and expand that.
We've got a pretty good program, it just needs some help.
Support, not help.
Yeah, support. Just somebody that knows what they're, what they're doing.
What about, is there?
I think under the finances, I think one of the first things we need to do is take a look at our salary schedules. And I know we've discussed that, you know. So, I think under school finances, one of our goals needs to be to look at salary schedules.
Jay, is that something that you would look at as being very positive?
Oh, yes, sir. I mean, that's, that's, I mean, that's an expectation. We already discussed that, so.
Okay. Well, let's put that as one and then have a, create a timeline by which we hope to maybe look at that. It's like most salary schedules, you'll see inequities very quickly. But the problem is you will not have the money instantly to resolve all of those inequities and it takes time to, to get to a resolution where there's fairness for, for all people involved. Okay, that's a good one. What is, what is another one there that you think could be, or area could be used to as a objective or goal for this coming year?
Well, obviously, the high expectations for teachers and students because that's the only way we're gonna move forward and...
Yeah, I hear. How are we gonna measure that? We will talk about it. We'll create an action plan which we...
I mean, I personally think that there needs to be a, a set scale slash guideline or, or, what is the word I'm looking for? Basically, for each position, like, you know, these are the, these are the expectations we have for your, your position. If you're not meeting those, you know, I know, we've talked about it a lot, you know.
Are you talking about, are you talking about, uh, uh, job descriptions or?
Basically, you know, your job duties, you know, your, what are, the duties that are, that are attached to your position, you know.
I used to call this a position guide, but it defines what's expected of each. Now, let me say this, I have done this before. This is not something, if you're starting with, with very little, this takes time to you, for you to create this for, for all of the different positions that exist in the district. And we could, we could work on that. I mean, that's something we could work on and that would be connected with this. But Jay, you may have some other ideas of things that you would include in that.
Yes, sir. Sorry if I regretted, but, so I, I gave Whitney my entry plan.
Okay.
It's basically the first up to 90 days. And I'm looking at it right here, meeting collectively with principals of department ads and individually receiving a state of the department report. And that'll include three years of trend data. And assessment and evaluation of key personnel within each division. Discussions to gain greater understanding of weaknesses and strengths in each department or campus.
Absolutely. Now, let me ask a question here now. Does that, now, I don't want this to be mine, I want it to be yours. Do you feel like that with that, we should have the position guides or, or, or job descriptions for these positions created over time?
Yeah, I, I think what he's laying out is the baseline to get to what we're talking about there, in, in my opinion. Because he's gonna have to have time to write with everybody and then go from there. But I think that's, that's laying a, a good groundwork for that.
Well, here's another thing too. He cannot create 150 job descriptions, but other people can. When you have a common, common, what am I trying to think? Template that you use, so there's commonality in every one, which works out much better than just saying, "You create this and none of them are alike."
I think the high expectations and the, the financial go hand in hand. Because when we start looking at it, there could be like, well, maybe we only need a halftime assistant principal because the number of students don't even warrant that. And what could we do there? Could they become like a curriculum person to go with that? And so, that's gonna help with the high expectation. Or, for instance, yeah, there's just a lot of things that we could start looking at, but that would tie to each other. And by looking at each job, how, is it doing anything? Like Jennifer knows, she's been forever and they throw programs out and say, "You have to do that." It doesn't mean that was very successful. So, yeah, you know, what we're doing, is that working? Is it good that we have? Do we need more pairs? Do we need less pairs? Did it not help our scores to have that? You know, those sort of things. And I think they go hand in hand.
Ms. Connie, are you talking about analysis of all existing programs that you're purchasing or you're using?
No, no. I'm just saying that as we start looking at these things and what, you know, what's going on at, like Jennifer knows what's going on at her school. And maybe it's the fact that we need less second grade teachers and it would be better to move somebody to first grade or, you know, kindergarten, whatever, those kind of things. And then, that, once again, that's a financial thing because you're not necessarily hiring more, but you're getting more bang for your buck.
Efficiency.
Efficiency.
Well, Mr. Chalk, in, in most board policy, gives him the ability to transfer or place people in positions where they're needed. I know a lot of times if somebody's been teaching third grade for eight years and you tell them that the large third grade class is moving to fourth and we lack one teacher there, that a third grade teacher has to move up, they typically may not like that. But that's what you're talking about. That's the efficient thing to do instead of hiring another teacher.
I just think those two things, when we start looking like, is this working? Is our high expectation? And then, it, it follows right away with the finance. Are we gonna need to spend more? Can we actually not spend as much and we've been not using the funds as well as we could have?
Well, you're, Jay, are you getting an idea about what she's talking about in this?
Yes, sir. And, and I don't, I don't know, and this is, you know, part of, like Connie, me not being here. So, everywhere I've been, and I started in Clinton because they weren't doing it and we were very overstaffed, was, I had each principal do an FTE report of full-time equivalency. So, we saw exactly how many periods they had, how many kids they had, each one of those periods. And that was given to the board and it's glaring when you see that. In, in all, past place, there was an individual that had two classes and the rest of the day, nobody knew what he did. And, and it comes down to from really looking at those master schedules and having them do an FTE report. So, it's in front of everybody and very visible. And so, that's how in the past I've...
That's basically what I'm... And I mean, there's gonna be situations like if you're teaching three AP classes, you're probably doing a handful high, maybe only have, if you're lucky, 12 kids in each class or less. So, that doesn't mean you do necessarily away with it, but maybe you can operate every other year or maybe you can do something different. But like you said, we have somebody that's full-time, but they're teaching two classes and then we're putting them in a class where they're like monitoring students. And so, it's like, that's not getting you your money.
For drivers' ed, you don't have any drivers to teach.
Basically, we're just evaluating the district. I mean, at the end of the day, we're evaluating the district.
Evaluation.
And it's at a building level, it's at a department level, and, and there's no better time to do that than bringing in a new superintendent.
I call that effectiveness and efficiency. Where you look at efficiency in regards to how much money you're spending and the outcome is gonna be the effectiveness of student outcomes and relating to student achievement and other things. And then, when you start looking at other districts comparable in size, then you'll get a very, it'll be very glaring instantly if you're overstaffed or understaffed in comparable sized districts when you start looking at student teacher ratios and those things. But that can be developed, I think, into a, into a, the goal that would be very informative for the board and also Jay would have time to do that next week, I think.
We didn't have graduation yesterday, so that's one class that's out the door, so.
Okay, what, what else? We're talking about then the school finance, salary schedules with that. We're talking about expectations for high performance, the FTE report in with that. And, and also now, let me ask you this. When you talk about high performance, are you talking about accountability? Is that part of that accountability? And that will, that carries over beyond, beyond his office into the buildings, principals, evaluations, consistency in evaluations, those type of things. That, that carries over into lots of areas which would be some items in this to, to include as action items. Any, uh, this, this right here, CTE and college communication, college concurrent credit. Are y'all offering a number of concurrent credit courses now?
We offer a few, but I really think we need to get to the point where we are giving students the ability to have an associate's degree when they graduate. That's what all schools are looking at. That is kind of, that's what's helping out our students.
Is that, in, in a district this size and your location, is that, is that something that's doable?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we just did it at Clinton.
Okay.
Started two years ago, so kids...
But it's not something you're gonna do in one year? It's gonna have to take some planning to add and add to make it happen?
Well, Dr. Rick Massengill, president of Northark, and I are, are friends. And we've already started conversations about it, Dr. Williams, about bringing in Northark. And, you know, they actually have night classes for individuals in the community on Clinton High School campus. And they're the ones we started the aviation mechanics program with. And he, he wants to be here.
What about looking at a, at a plan then laid out a timeline by which these things would start, start working as a, as a goal?
I just think we probably need like, sort of a, like an update maybe every four months. Then, or if you need something sooner, three months, yeah.
Mr. Nichols?
Let me just go ahead, I'm trying to interrupt.
No, you're good.
We're starting that in the fall.
Okay, you're already going there. Perfect.
So, does that merit being, being a, a goal in regards to this coming year still? Even though you're working on it?
I think it needs to be a goal because it needs to be stayed on top of.
And we've had some trouble with coordinating with the, with NAC. Like, they wanna be their own schedulers of time rather than get our time.
Yeah.
So, that is gonna need to...
Mr. Nichols, is it gonna be, have anybody, somebody on campus or is it gonna be more online? How is it gonna work?
Leaders, yes. We're gonna do whatever we need to do. We've talked about the HVAC. HVAC, if you want to leave in the afternoon, go, go get that. Northark, we're gonna make that, that happen. So, we, we talked about a number of things with Dr. Massengill. I mean, they spent a lot of time on this. So, so I think we're, we're, we're gonna be able to fine tune that over the next year, so.
Do you have teachers in high school with the, with the content area graduate hours that would allow them to?
We're starting, we're starting with one who has a master's degree in, in, in language arts and English. And he's gonna be doing Comp 1 and Comp 2, working for Northark, but in our building. He's also one of our specialized teachers, so that's a start.
Right.
He's only qualified right now, but we need that Comp 1, Comp 2 teacher onsite because that's where our kids struggle. So, we're getting there.
Well, that, that's not easy to accomplish, getting that many content area people that are qualified to do that. I understand that.
Do we not offer math right now? We used to offer out the college algebra, but we do nothing.
So, I had a meeting the other night, 61 families attend a meeting on, on concurrent credit.
No, it's not.
Is it onsite or? It's not onsite, is it?
Not onsite. Not only on sites that, that come for, to you starting in the fall.
Is, is there a reason? Because we used to have an onsite.
Corlette was our onsite.
Not unless, I mean, they invited a teacher to come down and, and I don't know why.
Oh, we used to have our own teacher.
Yeah, we don't have that, we don't have that 18-hour content and graduate level.
Yeah, we don't have that, we don't have that eighteen hour content and graduate level math.
Okay. Not one math teacher has?
Not eighteen graduate hours of math. That's, it's not uncommon.
It's just not uncommon, yes. Always hard, hard to get, to get that.
Hard to find a math teacher.
But we will, we will
So am I, am I okay, Dr. Williams, offering, I mean, thoughts about?
Yes, yes.
So how about we do this for number three? And this is what I did at Clinton. So Rick was there constantly. I mean, he drove from Harrison into Clinton. And, you know, I, I, I know he would do the same thing here. So he'll start coming in with me and he'll give reports to y'all about the status of where things are and, and updates on our plans and, and how we're proceeding from there. And then he'll do it pretty often. I mean, he would do it whenever I'd ask him to, so.
It sounds like Mr. Nichols got a good foundation going.
So then, so are you saying then with that, with what's already going and the connections there, this would not need to be something that we create an action plan and, and being
I, I think we'd still need to. I'm prepared that they wanna be updated and that's why I said, that'll be very easy for Dr. Massengill to get involved and for us to keep them updated on what the plans are and how we're proceeding and all that.
At least for now, quarterly, quarterly updates, CTE.
You know, we shoot for that, but we, I'm pretty sure I'm gonna speak for him, but we're very close. And so he would come anytime I'd ask him.
He's signing numbers just like y'all are. Isn't that right?
Right.
Appreciates that, yeah. So then, looking at this, and I know it's not, it's not clearly defined yet into a, to a specific goals and an action item to accomplish. But still, one area would be in the school of finance salary schedules. The second one could be in the expectations of high performance. And this would be with, for staff and students and FTE report. Now, and also expectations of high performance. Now, the way I view that sometimes is how you create an environment or a culture where the high expectations is what, is what you live. And that goes with the way that, uh, in regards to teachers, what's expected of them, how good they feel about being in that building. And, and, and those type of things, uh, contribute to that, is that? Okay. And then, and then the last thing would be on the CTE and college credit, uh, and working toward an associate's degree over a period of time. So if, if that's okay, what we will do is we will create a draft of this. And then Mitch and I cannot fully develop this, but we can kind of start what you've shared with us. Give this to Jay and then he can fine tune it and get it to the point where he'll have, have something that he can hand you, which will, which will, uh, give you an understanding of what, what he hopes to, uh, to work on, accomplish. And then you'll have input again to tell him if there's certain things that need to be tweaked or changed to meet what your understanding is of those goals and that goal and those action items. And, and maybe, uh, maybe by the next board meeting or so.
Sure. Hey, Dr. Williams, I mean, I, I, being transparent, am I out of line by sharing with the board too immediate, uh, needs I foresee? No. So y'all, I mean, from talking with lots of people and, and, uh, kind of viewing what's going on so far as I'm coming in. And, you know, I struggled and, and talked with Brian about do I wait for a year? To kind of share with y'all these two immediate needs or, or do I just share with you now? And, because it's up to y'all for these two needs. But, um, one of them's a, uh, assistant superintendent in charge of curriculum instruction. You know, just by, in the facts of looking at the letter grades and, um, you know, hearing some things that the vertical alignment's not very good. And some other problems. And with a school our, district our size, I put the numbers together for that, for y'all to see. And that I wished you would consider. Now, I know also with me and, and fiscal responsibility comes into play. There's ways that we could pay for this position that wouldn't come out of operating. A lot of places use ESA and Title I funds for this position. And so I wish that you would consider that. You know, and, and, and if, if you don't feel that that's proper at this time, that's okay. You know, we'll give it a year, but I, I do feel like right now by just viewing everything and the data that that's, it's an emergency. It's an immediate need, especially with the hiring season right now. For us to get somebody good, you know, and there might be people in-house, you know, I, I would, you know, interview them and we would try to figure that out. And the second one is someone to be in a communications director for us. And, um, I, I don't mean to step on anybody's toes or anything, but, um, you know, coming into town for the four or five days I've been here, you know, nobody knows who I am. And so I'm, I'm very good about just, uh, talking to people at Walmart or at a restaurant when we're eating. Or, you know, and, and I, I don't, uh, you know, Jen would be with me sometimes and we'd say, hey, you know, if it was a waitress or whoever, you know, hey, we're, we're gonna be moving here, but it'll be a few months. But, um, so we were just wondering, do you know, do you know anything about the schools? And, and y'all, it, it was, um, it wasn't, it wasn't very good. Um, I got the view that there was a, there's a bad perception and I'm not saying that it's the whole community, but of the visits that we've made, and, and there's been, there, there was a couple that were like, oh yeah, they're, they're okay. And, or I, you know, I love the teachers or, or this or that. But the majority were all, you know, were negative. And so, um, the way to overcome that is one, especially with the way media is, especially social media, is to have a communications director that what we did at Clinton was that individual, we share our story and we share it multiple times a day. And if y'all have ever gone on Clinton's Facebook or website, there's five posts at least a day. The state track team left today. We had three posts about that. They had a parade, they went through downtown, honking horns, signs, you know, it's just sharing all the good things that are going on. Because people don't know. Unless you just, I say it, pound it into them, let them see it. And, 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 and that is one of the best moves I made when I went back home was hiring a communications director. She also teaches east, it's half a day. But with the assistant superintendent for instruction and curriculum, I would like to have that person be involved in that also. That'd be just one job. And so, um, I just wanted to share with you that I feel those are two huge needs and emergencies that, um, I'd, I'd like to not put off and wait, so.
I'll let us show you all later.
Do you need something copied or?
I mean, we could copy it, but you have more?
Yeah.
Is it just one per age or?
Yes, sir. There's, yeah, there's one is the curriculum instruction and one is the communications director. And those are the, so we're in the middle Huntsville. It's the ten districts below us in, um, enrollment and the ten above us. So it's the same size school district than what they have, so.
But this would be, you would hire one person to do
I would like to try, yeah, miss me, find one person to do both of those.
Because a curriculum director is gonna be in and out of the schools constantly anyways. So around the Interesting for the per hour. I could get out of here very quickly.
Exactly, that's what I said. High at work. What constitutes when they start charging per hour? That's, that's something I didn't know, but I should have called and asked. And I'll entertain any questions if y'all need to ask. If you don't, that's fine also, so.
Well, until June thirtieth, I serve as pleasure of the board. So, so I will do what you all choose to do. If you would, would like for us to pursue this, if you need some time to think about that, uh, you know, that, that, that's up to you all. It's whatever, it's what, it's what you think. We could, we could open that up and start seeking people for it. You wanna take some time to think about it? You, this is a, this is a you call, or wait. That's
I mean, I, I, I think it's needed, but, uh, I was just seeing where, um, we got, uh, I understand where your reservations are also probably coming from. We don't have to jump into anything.
I'll leave this one to y'all. I'm just being honest, I mean, I think it's needed.
I mean, I think we tend to put a whole lot of tasks on people into where they're not able to be efficient in anything.
Well, they're efficient, they're
They're efficient, but it's not as much as they could be.
Right.
Like, you know, we're able to really focus on their job instead of saying, all right, well, you're doing really good with this job, so I'm gonna give you five more.
That's what happens when you're a good employee.
Maybe, but then that means that they've gotta take away from this to deal with their other five jobs.
I'd like to ask the person who's kind of doing this job right now, what he thinks about this. And does he, because I'm not quite sure what assistant superintendent of student services does compared to, because I just seen doing curriculum like gobs and gobs and trying to keep up with all that.
Um, there, so this year's been a, for me, has been a lot more compliance focused. Working on accreditation and, uh, new teacher, novice AOPs or just anything that's compliance related, Jay. And I've talked a little bit about that. And so there's been a lack in curriculum and instruction. Because that really, when I started in this role, that was my job duties was curriculum and instruction. Since we lost the program compliance and personnel person, uh, when we lost that position, Jonathan and I split those duties up and he took some, I took some. And then I picked up several more of those. I, I was looking at those two job descriptions a few days ago and, um, the assistant superintendent and the personnel program compliance. And pretty much everything I'm doing right now is personnel, that personnel program compliance. I don't have as much time to do the curriculum and instruction piece as I did when I started in this role.
You're also going to teacher fairs and
Mm-hmm. Which is also that personnel program compliance.
So, I mean, that's
It's a lot. Yeah. So I would say that like right now, my role is expected to do two people's role. Um, and so like would be saying, yes, there's, like, there's so much on me that there are things that are, that are lacking. That I wish I could be good at and, uh, and I'm just not.
Well, you lost Susan, you lost a big person. And that role's never been filled.
No.
And, and I would have loved to have filled that with her this year myself, but, but she was unavailable.
Well, my question about this then is, that position was never an assistant superintendent's job. Could we not just hire a compliance person slash communications director? Rather than add another administrative, I mean, I know they're in a kind of an administrative role, but rather than another assistant superintendent?
I mean, wait, that's, of course, whatever the board wishes.
I mean, I'm just, I mean, like, does it work that way? I mean, because we never
So are you saying taking the compliance and everything off of him?
Well, I don't know, which he ever, when he likes better.
I mean, I miss being in the building and I miss being with the teachers. I miss, you know, Jonathan and I worked hard to, um, try to get in the rooms and see the instruction. Uh, we had expectations that we were looking at and we would send those out to the teachers. And, um, I don't do that now and, uh, I miss that, so.
Where, where before, like I said, we'd never had two assistant superintendents and so
We only had assistants starting four year ago.
Yeah, yeah. And so to add another assistant superintendent at this time, I don't know that that's gonna could it just be an appliance, compliance to fill that role again slash communications?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think, and, and this is, of course, I'm not here daily. But when I hear alarming things like we're not aligned vertically, that there might be a different reading program at one campus than there is at another.
Which I think we're, we're starting to get more aligned with that though already, right? Yeah, so part of the issue with alignment as far as elementary to intermediate was when we had COVID money, we were able to purchase curriculum, but primary only had certain choices for their curriculum that met the literacy standards of the state. And so they picked up benchmark curriculum, uh, while intermediate picked up H and H curriculum. And so we've already been in those discussions of how do we fix this now? We need to go back and, and align that curriculum.
And I don't think they speak out of turn at all about that. But one of the things that we've been looking at is what are these achieving schools using for their curriculum? You know, and working on resolving that situation. But yes, it was because we had two choices at primary where intermediate, the, the curriculum didn't go down to the K two. It didn't cover the, the requirements available.
Yeah, and we are very fortunate to have Judy Fields working in the district. She's a literacy specialist from Co-op. She's done tons and tons of research as far as literacy goes and, um, and so she's kind of helping guide that along as well. And so we're, we're looking at narrowing it down to a couple of different options and then presenting that to the teachers and saying, okay, let's go, these are the two options. Let's get aligned and work from there.
And another problem with curriculum is so expensive and you're tied to it. Once, it's the worst having to pick because you're like, then you get into it and find out somewhere. But it's one of those things like the air conditioning. We can't buy curriculum for everybody because even if we had the money now, you don't know when that, you've gotta do it again. So we've gotta have a rotating plan, like where are we gonna start? Probably with primary, see if that works. And then the next group would have to, it has to feed and follow because you can't afford to do it all. And like you said, kind of back to the air conditioning, when we were COVID rich, it was less by the six-year plan while we have all this extra money that the district would normally have. So we kind of locked in three years ago, you know, and so it's hard to make a decision to then us change the curriculum and have to pay out that much money.
Well, and I, I just hope that y'all would know, and this is a, I mean, a great time and a beginning for all this. I mean, I, you know, again, I struggled with coming to I mean, I, you know, again, I struggled with coming to y'all with that. But to me, I have to look at the facts and, and so, of course, I'm not here every day, so I don't know what's going on. All I can see is all the D's up there. And, and so, I, I, that just signals to me after doing this for 33 years, something's got to change. And we've got to do something if we're gonna ramp it up those expectations and get things to where we need to be. And just from the few clues that I've gotten, automatically went to, that we, we've got to have this curriculum instruction person that dedicates their all day to that, being in campuses, you know, aligning the curriculum, going through the standards. And I don't, I don't know again what's being done right now. All I can do is just look at the data and see results.
Does that person to fill this position necessar, I think what Connie's asking, I may be wrong, necessarily need to be superintendent certified or could it be just an administrator? Is that part of the superintendent?
What I'm saying is, I'm sorry, what I'm saying is, I don't think we need to add a new position at this time. What I'm saying is, we've had this position in the past, we lost that person, we didn't fill that position. Now, we could fill that position, but that position was never an Assistant Superintendent. We did, it was a compliance officer over personnel policy. And now, we could add into that communications. And I wouldn't have a problem with that. But adding a, this, another Assistant Superintendent at this time, that's where I struggle with. That's a whole new, in everybody's vision, a whole new position.
So, the title is what?
For me, it's the title.
So, what you're saying is basically bring back the position that Jonathan had at one time and.
Well, Susan Pepper.
Susan, then Jonathan, then Audra. Yeah. And so, basically bring that position back, take those duties off of Matt, make Matt back on the curriculum side.
And he has a passion for it. You've got to have a passion for it.
And so, okay, I'll see what you.
Yes, and so that we're not making a new position, we're just hiring for a position that we have not filled for.
We've already found that lane in our salary schedule anyway, don't we?
Well, no, so we redid it, they might, is it there?
Yeah, that's it. I mean, we, we've had it in the past.
Yeah, yeah.
So, should we open that in-house right now to see who applies and talk to a few people? Or do you want to do it yourself when you get here? You know what I'm saying? Because they're gonna be right there with you a lot of stuff, right?
Well, and, and y'all, you'll hear me say this all the time. Whoever the best person is for the job, we need to either get them here or find them here.
Right.
You know, and, and, and I'll be honest with you, I mean, knowing that I was coming here, I've already been inquired by two people. Man, Jay, I'd love to go there and work with you. I mean, I know you've got, and, and they, they see it like me as a goal line. Ready to explode, you know, and so, it would be, I mean, to me, you always hire the best.
Absolutely.
Who's the best for your kids, not who they're related to or what their name is.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean? Or, or they've made, somebody's made promises to them. You can't do that. You've got to hire who's best for your kids and, and get it going, so.
Well, and it has to be somebody that has good communication skills because they're gonna have to work with the teachers and find out what's going on. And, yeah, and.
You're gonna have to be pretty freaky.
And well, and if they're working as student. Well, here's the thing, here's the thing, if we will put, we will not make posts, they will not be able to comment on posts.
Yeah, that's true.
And there will be a disclaimer at the, at the top.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if you go on the Clinton's Facebook page, you know, we had our local attorney write the disclaimer for us and it's at the top and it basically said, this is not for debates, this is just informational purposes so we can highlight our kids and students, I mean, our staff and students. And we will not take any debates, blah, 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 that kind of thing. And it's up there and then if we think there's gonna be any comments, Sarah turns those off. And that's pretty much 90% of the time.
Absolutely.
Any comments, we're just telling them how great things are and what we're doing.
Because legally, if somebody posts something derogatory or negative, we can't remove it after it's there. And so.
Well, I, and I think Student Services goes better with that Director of Communications too. Because if they're involved with what's going on and the student.
Yeah, and y'all do know this. I, I, I hope I don't feel like I put you on the spot. I didn't mean to whatsoever. It's just a sense of it, it being an emergency. And, and I just prayed about and felt like I couldn't wait. I mean, I just had to bring it to y'all. And then if, if, but you are the board and I'm totally fine, this is us building a relationship. If y'all feel we need to wait, that might be what's best because then we can see, you know, of, of what's going on and get a better feel and then we can rearrange and go from there. But, you know.
Well, we all got elected in 2022, so that's how much experience we've got as a board. Everyone else, that's how long, about 30 years now. And it's gonna be a little bit lighter. But, so, we're, we're pretty green on a lot of stuff. So, you're gonna have to help us as much as we do for you, you know what I mean? So, some of us don't know a lot about this stuff.
And this could be one of those things where we try it and see how it goes. But I agree that we've got to do something because we've got to show our better side. And we've also, when things, when we are, are not our better side is showing, we have to have, present our side so that it looks, you know.
And, and why can't be the best if we're having somebody burn both ends of the stick and not being able to?
Yeah, because one or the others, you can't do here.
Now, Bailey, can you set up something if they do a site like that? Or the bots and the fake profiles and all that BS cannot get in there? I mean, you're pretty good at that stuff, but, so you, I don't know if it's doable, but.
Are you talking about moderating, like who can comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we've been there now.
Well, no, the fake accounts, fake Facebook accounts and stuff.
But see, nobody can post on it, so it doesn't matter. They can have all the fake they want.
If you have, if you have comments turned off, then nothing can get on there. Nobody can, no, it's sort of no means.
As much fakey as they want, but they can't get on.
Well, I'd say that's above my technical, my technical.
But I'm, I'm also with Mr. Chalk in the fact that we need to, um, we may have the best person already in our district. And we don't even know they would, but it needs to be the best. So, I think we need to put it.
It comes from outside, it comes from outside.
Yeah, we just have to open it up to everybody.
And everybody has same equal opportunity to apply.
That's something we need a motion for.
Well, if, if, if.
Well, I don't know if we can do it this time, we have to wait.
I don't know what Chalk.
Absolutely.
We interviewed different people when we put our faith in Mr. Chalk. It said, oh, we've been quiet this. And I'm, I'm, I put my faith in him that night and I have not lost a bit of sense. And I'm 100% behind on what his decision might be on this. So, it'd be up to you all to guide that, how you want to go about it, what personnel is. But he says it's an emergency, the man's serious.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you wouldn't want to come in here disturbing people if it ain't an emergency. I see them grades, if I'd brought them grades home to school, my mama wouldn't have liked that either.
It'd have been a flash water or flip-flop time, wouldn't it?
It'd have been witchy. But, no, we put our faith in him when we hired him, so we need to give him the benefit of the doubt and let's roll it. We can sit here and talk about it all night, but if we, if we didn't trust him to start with, we shouldn't hire him.
Absolutely.
So, I say, if Mr. Chalk says we need this, let's do it. Whether you use Matt, Spurgsen or whoever. Just y'all draw up some plan and, and let's get this started. I'd like to make a motion to go with that.
We can't do it right now.
When the time comes and count.
Move it to the.
We are so far out of circle right now.
I've never been in that circle. If I want that, I'd like to say we put our faith in him and I would do that.
So, what is your, what is the recommendation of the board? Or the wishes of the board?
And we can do it now, we don't need to finish up with this first?
I, I, I mean, I can come back and say. We're still in, we are still in session. We never came out of session.
Well, I knew that, but I didn't know if we had to finish up one new business before we move to another new business.
I mean, our next move is to move to personnel after this is over with.
Okay.
So, if, if you all would like to finish this and then go to personnel, we will do that. Dr. Williams, are you at a stopping point here?
Yes, we are. I'll just, we are, we can, we can take what we got here and get, get a start.
I don't guess, I guess we're all good right here. I don't guess what Cherry said didn't matter. We have a slate of personnel that's been presented to you. Are there any additions or changes you'd like to make to that slate of personnel?
I would like to go to executive session to discover, to talk about employment.
I'd like to go there.
All right, we are back from executive session.
All right, we have a slate of personnel that's been presented to you on your paper. Are there any questions about that? If not, I would like to add to that that we will be seeking applications for an additional assistant superintendent position. We will have an assistant superintendent position in charge of curriculum, instruction, and communication. We will have a assistant superintendent position open in charge of student services and compliance. We will take applications for both of those and conduct interviews. And we will select an additional person to join our assistant superintendent in filling those two roles to be determined by Mr. Chalk and the interview process that takes place. That would be the recommendation.
All right, we've only got one assistant principal job open though, right?
Assistant superintendent, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
You've only got one open, okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
I say in all favor.
Okay, is there anything else?
Did you want to read through all of them?
No.
No.
Hires are Margaret Haney, Jim Brown, Jessie Parker, Crystal Schaefer, Chad Floyd, Caitlin Bundle, Cassidy Frye, resignations are Mary Hafner, Heather Crouch, Shelly Walden, Devon Rathgen, Jeff Reeves, Divina Eaton, Jennifer Munson, Rocky Bell, Rosalie Saylor, Tamara Robinson. Transfers in district is Bruce Dunlap, moving from girls to boys basketball. Bailey Culver, moving from middle school art to high school English. Angela Ray, St. Paul pre-k teacher to St. Paul third grade teacher. And that is our personnel.
All right, thank you. And I just want to say thank.
Is this no contract issue?
Nope.
No. That is our personnel as presented.
I want to say thank you to Ms. Walden, Mr. Reeves, Ms. Eaton, Mr. Bell. Thank you guys for all your years of service in the district. We appreciate all you've done. And thank you Josh.
Yeah.
This is Josh's last name.
Appreciate you guys.
We appreciate it.
It's been a good three year working with everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you everyone again.
Everybody listening.
Now I can call you and talk to you, we won't have to worry about you.
I do appreciate everybody, I really do.
If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Thank you teachers, I do want to say that.
Yes, thank you teacher.
God bless you Bailey Cotton, okay.